The Committee of Finance and Infrastructure. As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any that are coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Mr. McClure, if you'll please call the roll.
Chair Codis.
Here.
Vice Chair Pryor. Mr. Allen. Mr. Allison.
Here.
Mr. Blaine. Mr. Bryan. Mr. Kalapa. Mr. Meekins. Mr. Turner. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Our first item of business is to review several items on the committee's consent agenda for approval this morning. Read it now, which includes the pre- approval of the minutes of the July 30, 2025 meeting. And you'll note that we're have been using a new format that's a little bit more detailed. Advanced planning, spending authority for the Chapman Hall Cryo T E M. Designer selection for Memorial Hall interior restoration and self liquidating debt. I know that some board members had questions, were able to get those to Mr. Knopman, and he provided answers. Are there any additional questions on those items? Anything that needs to be discussed in open session? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve all the items. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All the items, all the action items approved by the committee will be placed on the full board's consent agenda for the full board's approval tomorrow. Now moving into our information only section, our first information item today is to hear a fiscal year 2025 UNC Investment Fund performance update from Jonathan King, CEO of UNC Management Company. Mr. King?
Thank you. Team members, Chancellor. I just, I'll start by saying I stand here today with actually very mixed emotions. I've done this, this is my 20th presentation of this sort in my final. But I just want to thank, I want to, it's been a great run. Not without its ups and downs over the years, as financial markets have been to do. But it's been a great run, and but I just really appreciate the support that I have received and the whole team at UNC Management Company has received from this Board of Trustees, from Chancellor and others, and I just want to thank everybody for basically supporting us and allowing us to to achieve the record we have, which we're all very proud of and take great pride. So with that, I'm going to jump into my prepared slides. So each year I start with just a reminder of the structure of the various funds that we manage. And it starts with the Chapel Hill Foundation Investment Fund, or as we call it, CHIF Chapel Hill Fund, which as of June 30, closed the fiscal year at $6.1 billion. First time over $6 billion. And underneath that, there's a number of entities that basically roll up into the CHIF. So there's the UNC Chapel Hill, what's called the Statutory Endowment Fund. That's 2.6 billion. Then there's the Central Foundation at UNC Chapel Hill, which is another 569 million. And then the rest is very decentralized. There are a number of various foundations on campus supporting the various schools and entities. And in aggregate, those roll up to 2.9 billion. The biggest of which being Arts and Sciences and Foundation and the like. So it's, it's once again very decentralized, but the the concept was to pool all these funds into a single entity where we could get economies of scale and management to oversee the entire portfolio. And then back in 2002, so once again, just before I arrived, an entity called the UNC Investment Fund was formed, and the purpose of this was to allow other schools in the UNC system to invest alongside the Chapel Hill Investment Fund. But the Chapel Investment Fund is still the governing entity, and so the Investment Fund Board here at Chapel Hill still oversees the whole process. The market value of the UNC Investment Fund at June 30 was $12.2 billion. So this basically kind of schematically shows that where virtually all the other schools but one have invested some or all of their long-term money in the UNC Investment Fund. Once again, aggregating to $6.1 billion, so the total was 12.2. CHIF does remain the controlling member of the fund. And then UNC Management Company, of which I am the leader, is up in that green box. We are the, we've been contracted by CHIF to be the investment manager of all these funds. So the management company was once again formed back in 2002 as a separate entity. We're a separate not-for-profit. But our board is, is in fact controlled by UNC Chapel Hill. We have B O T Chair and the Chancellor as board members, as well as Vice Chancellor. We have 39 employees currently, 18 investment professionals, and then various support functions, H R, Ops, relation, investor relations, and compliance alone. So what we're trying to accomplish is fairly basic. Is to preserve the purchasing power of the underlying funds in real terms, i.e. after inflation, but also to generate an annual spending rate to support the endowed programs. And so basically, the the box at the bottom shows mathematically. If we spend something like 5.5% out of each fund every year, and long-term inflation is 2.5, we have to generate a long-term return in excess of eight to meet our objective. Pretty simple math. It's not always easy to accomplish. So the process starts with asset allocation. We basically work with the the Investment Fund Board to set the asset allocation targets, and I'll show those in a minute. And then we at the management company go out and find external investment managers to appropriately invest in each one of the asset classes. So to be clear, we are not picking individual securities at UNC Management Company. We're hiring investment managers that then each with a specific, very focused, very specific niche to to use their expertise to pick the underlying portfolios. So these, these are the targets, the long-term asset allocation targets. And the one box I've outlined here is private equity, which is the single largest targeted asset class at 27%. Long equity, which is just publicly traded equities, is second. So it's, it's an equity-oriented portfolio. But private equity is where we have really added value over the years. Our, our private equity portfolio, and particularly our venture portfolio, is really second to none. It's truly a world-class portfolio that's generated 20% plus compound returns over very long time horizons. So fantastic results driven in part, not entirely, but in part by by our private equity allocation. When you think about our portfolio and how we manage it, our primary advantage is time horizon. We are a long-term fund. We don't have to worry about the daily, monthly, or even yearly volatility of the markets. We can ride through the storms, if you will. In a classic example, it's 2008, 2009, where we kind of stuck to our knitting, stuck to our disciplines and managed through that. The biggest risk we have is because we have so much allocated to things like private equity and also some other illiquid strategies, hedge funds, and the like, is illiquidity. So if we run into a down market and have to sell, sell public holdings to meet our liquidity needs, that creates, that creates an opportunity to basically sell at the bottom, so to speak. So one of the things we really focus a whole lot of time and energy on is with all these illiquid investments is also to manage the liquidity in the fund. And we've done, once again, I think a reasonably good job of navigating that, this, this kind of natural tension between illiquidity and time horizon. So let's get to the results. On the fiscal year, we were up 11.6% in fiscal 2025. In the spring, when the markets were collapsing, we didn't think there was any reasonable chance of hitting a double-digit return this year. And yet the markets came back very strong in later April, May, June, and pushed us over into a 11.6% return. This outperforms our so-called SIP, Strategic Investment Policy Portfolio. The SIP return is just if each asset class was allocated exactly at its target, and each asset class earned its benchmark return, the fund would have generated a 9.2% return. Now, we did lag a, what we'll call a traditional global 70-30 stock bond portfolio, because equities were up rather dramatically over this period of time. But in big up markets, we tend to lag behind a little bit, and then, but in down markets, we tend to protect. In terms of how we rank relative to peers, there are still some large schools reporting. But the fact is that this return will be above median, probably won't be top quartile. So it'll be a second quartile, but year to year, you know, those things sort of wash out. And the interesting thing this year is some of our best, actually, our single best performing asset class with a hedge fund asset class, which is long-short equity managers, hedge funds that just basically buy equities and or short equities. And they just had a phenomenal year, really navigating the volatility in the markets and the ups and downs incredibly well, generating almost an unbelievable 23% return from the year. And this is what really counts. This is the dollars. I always like to show this chart. We started the year in the Chapel Hill Fund at a little under 5.6 billion. Generated net investment gains, net of all fees and expenses of 659 million, and then distributed 298 million to the university to support programs and to support development. So another way I like to think about this is we, we distributed a little less than half the gains. So the 659, we distributed around 300 and reinvested the other 360 to, for future spending and for, to grow the portfolio. And that's, those numbers, that's about how it shakes out over time, is you generate investment returns, you spend about half, you reinvest about half, and then you get a little boost, or I shouldn't say a little, a significant boost from new contributions that come into the fund, which were 113 million. But the bottom line is the fund increased in value by 474 million after distributing roughly 300 million to support the university. This just shows the return to various asset classes. And this, this, this chart's a little bit skewed by the fact that gold had such a great year, and so the bars all look short. The fact of the matter is equity markets were all up mid-teens, 16, 17%, which is a solid year. But gold was, once again, the outstanding performer. So thinking about markets, where are we right now? There's all sorts of geopolitical risks around the world. The markets are just kind of sailing through without too much concern about that. And that's the way financial markets work. They kind of discount the future, and they worry about financial things, not so much about geopolitical. And once the, once the tariffs, you know, started to come into focus and become, you know, what I'll say, a little bit more reasonable, the market really took off. And then there's the Fed. The Fed maintains its independence, Powell's, you know, still on the job, and we can debate whether he's doing a good job or a bad job. I think by and large that the Fed is perceived by the financial markets as being a stabilizing force and doing a reasonably good job. And then finally, you have this, you know, this new trend, this new theme, AI, which reminds me a little bit of the internet bubble back in the late 90s. There's just so much hype around it. And yet, just like the internet bubble, when all the dust settled, the internet changed the world, and AI will change. So, you know, where valuations ultimately get to is a little hard to say, and if and when this bubble pops. Once again, the key is to keep that long-term time horizon, but the fact is AI is, is real, and it's here to stay, and it's creating incredible investment opportunities. This is just, I, you know, this inflation's coming down, growth still looks okay, the economy's muddling through. Earlier this year, most economists thought we were on the verge of a recession. There's still some recession talk out there, but it's been pushed back at least into 2026, and we'll see. Valuations are high. There's a chart just showing the relative P E or the, actually, the absolute P E of the S and P 500. And it's up, you know, at the high end of the range, but it can get higher, and earnings can continue to grow. So I'm not predicting any, you know, whatever. I'm just saying, we have to be aware of that. And around-the-world valuations are high. This is like various markets around the world. And compared to the last 10 years, P Es in virtually every market or every geographic territory, except for the MSCI Frontier, which is the really tiny little markets, are, you know, kind of in their top quartile of valuation. So, so valuations are, are a consideration, and yet valuations are not a reason to panic or to get out, because once again, markets can continue to go up far longer than valuations might imply. So this is, this is once again a key slide. This is the long-term performance going out to 10 years of the fund. And we've slipped out of the top decile for the one and three-year periods, but we've remained top decile for the five, seven, and 10-year periods. We're ahead of our policy benchmark, comfortably ahead of our policy benchmark for all these periods. We're ahead of the 70-30 stock bond portfolio for everything except the shorter periods, one, three. And I really wish I was presenting at the next trustee meeting, because we are putting up a big number in the September quarter. And when we report the September numbers, 1, 3, 5, 7, 10, and even 12 and 15 will all be 10% compound plus. And they'll all be top decile. So we are, once again, our, our September quarter number is going to be north of 5%. So it's, it's really, and once again, driven in large part by the returns on the venture capital portfolio when we got our June 30 statements. So if you look at the five-year returns of the primary asset classes in the fund, you can see that private equity return compounding at 23%. That compares to its benchmark, its Cambridge Associates benchmark, around 15. So 15%, if you just got the benchmark return, would still be a pretty decent return. It would be the tallest bar on the chart. But our, our portfolio has exceeded that by eight percentage points. So it's phenomenal performance from the private equity. And once again, you can see great performance from some of our hedge fund asset classes as well. Long-short equity diversifying strategies put up solid numbers. So it was a good solid across-the-board year, but once again, led by private. And this is, you know, I talked earlier about the, the long-term objective of generating a return of 5.5%, i.e. a spending rate plus CPI. And that's reflected by the green bar in these charts. And if you just simply had a 70-30 stock bond portfolio, you'd be close, but only for one of these periods of time would you actually beat that, that objective, which is the 15-year. Whereas the blue line shows the returns on our portfolio, we've comfortably beaten the, our objective and added value to the long-term value of the fund. And then this one, this is the same chart I showed earlier. Earlier, I showed the one-year. This is the 10-year. So 10 years ago, the market value of CHIF was 2.8, 2.9 billion. Over the 10 years, we generated 4.1 billion in gains. Spent a little over half of that, spent 2.2 billion in annual spending distributions and development. Once again, reinvested the other almost 2 billion into the fund for future spending. And then the net additions of 1.2 gets you from the 2.8 to 6 billion, so more than a doubling over the 10-year period, even after spending $2.2 billion to support programs. So each year, we do have the spending distribution, and it's determined in advance. And the, the key to this chart isn't the numbers as much as we try to make it predictable. We try to make it go from lower left to upper right in a steady fashion, and the only time, the only break in that line was post-financial crisis in 09, 010. And we show that the per-unit distribution, so the amount each individual fund is distributed, has grown at a rate exceeding inflation over the entire time period here. So for instance, for the three years, we've grown the distribution rate to 6.2% a year, which has doubled the 2.9% inflation rate. So we've increased the value of the fund, but we've also increased the spending distribution in excess of inflation. And this just shows that the dollar value in millions. This most recent June 30, we distributed $254 million out of the fund to support the endowed programs. So with that, these are, this is, I call this my platitude slide. Long-term time horizon, diversification, risk management, all these things. But we stick to these disciplines, and this slide hasn't changed in, you know, maybe 20 years, certainly 10. We stick to these disciplines, and that, that is the key, is to not get whipsawed around in various market environments. I just will point out that we do produce reports for both the Chapel Hill Investment Fund and the UNC IF. The 2025 reports are not completed yet, but you can find the 2024 versions on the UNC Management Company website. So I'll wrap it up by just saying 11.6% was another solid year, and our long-term track record remains really, really strong. That'll answer any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there questions for Mr. King? Trustee one?
Thank you so much. I have a couple of questions. Can you just remind the group about the oversight of UNC Management Company? And who approves the investment fee, estate, management, and the budget and the distribution around for each unit of the company?
So the, the oversight of the investment fund, we have a, an entity called the Chapel Hill Investment Fund Board of Directors. And it's, it's rather convoluted way that everyone gets put on this particular board. But, but it's, there are a number of senior university officials, including Chancellor, Vice Chancellor Finance, and Vice Chancellor of Development. The Chair of the Board of Trustees is on this board, as well as another trustee. And then there's Endowment Fund Board, which is elected by this Board of Trustees. And that represents the majority. And then in addition, the Chapel Hill Foundation gets to appoint two board members. And there are three board members that are appointed at, or at large by the other. So it all adds up. There's 15 board members. We meet physically here in Chapel Hill three times a year. We have, there's an executive committee of that board that has monthly phone calls, and that's where we kind of get business done on a monthly basis in between meetings. So that's, that's that. In terms of the fees, we, we basically, UNC Management Company charges the fund essentially 20 basis points, a flat 20 basis points to provide these returns. All these returns that I showed you are net of all fees and expenses, our fee as well as external. What, what, find me the other. So the, the the budget for the management company, i.e. how much we spend to manage this entity, there's also a management company board, which is a smaller subset of that investment. They meet the same, sort of in the same cycle, but three times a year, and they approve our budgets every year. So once again, the Chancellor's on the management company board, as is the Vice Chancellor of Finance and the B O T Chair. So that's three of the eight members on the, on our management company board that approves all our budgets.
And development support? What portion of the 298 is development support?
I missed it, I, but I know what, I know what you're talking about. This one here.
I have an older version.
So basically, 45 million, 44, 45 million is developments. And I know that because we just had our audit approved yesterday, and so I was going through those numbers.
Right, and how is that number determined?
It's basically 1% of the value of funds that are subject to this. And there are some funds that are exempt from that. So if you just took the 5.5, 5.6 billion starting, you'd come out with like a $56 million number.
Right.
But there are some funds that are exempt, and that's basically not, that's at the university level. It's not at our level. It's been 1% now for, I want to say, four or five years. Prior to that, it was, this is from memory, I'm going to say 60 basis points, so considered 0.6%. And that's been, that was in place since I've been here 20 years. So there's always been a fee to support development.
Thank you.
You mentioned the different entities that are part of CHIF. Which entities are not part of CHIF that are university affiliated?
Well, so, so CHIF is for long-term investment. So it's, it's funds that are, you know, kind of what I'll call endowment, endowment-like funds. So operating funds are not part of CHIF, no sorts of things. The operating accounts of the university, the reserves, all those are invested elsewhere. Within the, what I call the endowment space, I think there's only one of the remaining independent foundations that has money managed by an external manager. So I don't know if you want to know the name of that, that foundation.
Is it UNC TV or which, which group?
Well, it's, it's an internal here on campus. There's a, it's the Medical Foundation has money that they have always had invested by another manager besides us. So, and we have some, they have some. In terms of the UNC system schools, UNC G is the only school that doesn't.
Great. Are there other questions? Trustee Brian?
Looking at the roughly, I guess, 250 million that you spent outside of development.
Yep.
Is that? How is that, how is the determination for how that spending is done?
So, so the, the underlying nature of endowment funds is they tend to be established as an, as an original gift by, by a donor. And then the rule of thumb in the industry is kind of 5% of, of, of the principal gets spent each year. So if someone were to set up a million-dollar endowment fund to support, and they get to name what they want to support, it could support financial aid, it could support a professorship, it could support a program. They, they give them a million-dollar gift, then something like 50,000 gets spent the first year. Something like 5% of the, it's not precise, but it's rough. And then each year, we increment that by something at or above the inflation rate. So it'll be 50,000 the first year, and then 50,000 plus 3% or 4% the second year, and then that number plus 3% or 4% the third year. And so each individual fund has its own spending. It's, there's, there's a, a group that, you know, reports to Nate who facilitates all the underlying, we'll keep an accounting for this, which is a kind of a monumental task, but it's done fund by fund by fund.
Trustee Allison.
John, thanks. Great for the great performance over an extended period of time, service to the university. As you look forward and you think about, you know, the, our, our investment mix by asset class, anything you see dialing up or dialing down, or is our existing mix kind of where you think we need to be over the next, say, five, 10-year time horizon?
I'm, as I sort of implied, I'm a very much steady-as she goes person. Our best performance in our best asset class, both absolute and relative, is venture capital. And I think the opportunities of venture capital are as good as they've ever been. Driven by AI and the fact that so much in the economy now takes place in, in private space. And so I, I, you know, if anything, I think that's solid, and we'll continue to do a great job there. And then we, like I said, we have two hedge fund buckets, which I didn't really get into the photo a lot, but they're both performing extremely well. One is quant, one's very quant-based, and the quant guys are actually doing a pretty phenomenal job right now. Biggest problem there is the fees they charge are ridiculous. But we, like I say, we measure everything on after-fee performance. The, the place we've struggled the most, very honestly, is, is in public equities beating the benchmarks, and we've indexed them on passive to a bigger share of, of the fund. You want to be involved in public markets. Public markets, over the long run, generate attractive returns. But we are struggling to find active managers who can beat the S and P 500 or other indices. So we've actually shifted more toward passive strategies. And there, we get pushed back. Well, how can you, how can you justify your fee if you're just buying index funds? Well, we justify our fee on venture capital and hedge funds in places we can add that.
Other questions for Mr. King? Trustee Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a question. I was just going to make a comment that I served on the CHIF board for six years, and also on the Endowment Fund Board, and the Management Company Board for two years. And I have never seen John King rattle Everglue's cool. He has to make the same presentation time and time again. He does it with great patience. And I don't think that, that it's, it's fully recognized how phenomenal the performance has been. We have traditionally outperformed our peers, our peer institutions. And I've been in the meetings and seen the benchmarking for the compensation for our team, which is historically lower than our peers that get a lower return. So we've basically punched above our weight class for a long, long time, and I just want to say thank you.
I, once again, I appreciate the support. Thank you.
There, next.
Whoa. Oh, sorry.
Mr. King.
Trustee one?
Run away.
I thought that was my.
It, it was, but, you know, John's been known to get ahead of himself. I had just a couple of questions. You said UNC G is not, does not participate. You said the Medical Foundation does not participate. The other system schools that are, I assume some, and you said some of them are exempt from the fees.
Now, so let me clarify all of this. Now, so let me clarify all of this. The, the, in that annual spending distribution development support number you see, not two ninety-eight. There's two components to that. Roughly two hundred and fifty million is this so-called spending distribution to support the program. So that's the, what I just described about the fifty thousand on the million dollar gift, and that all aggregates up to two fifty. And then there's a development support payment, which is like forty-five million dollars to support development. That's at Chapel Hill. So only the Chapel Hill entities. This is all Chapel Hill Investment Fund. So none of the outside schools are subject to that, that fee.
I would like to back up and talk about the outside schools at the higher levels. And you also, do you manage their funds?
So each one of those schools can choose to invest their money with us, but aren't, are not forced to. Um, our returns have been so good that over time, most of the schools have made the decision to put their money with us. Most are very, very happy with everything.
Would it be fair to say that without the F of the UNC endowing, they would probably not have access to the same um opportunities that they have when we come in with them?
That, that is, that is an absolutely phenomenally true statement. And that's our biggest sales pitch is, there's no other school in the system that can even come close to replicating what we do with our scale and our expertise and our, our depth and knowledge.
And all those schools, you know, pay fees at Chapel Hill uh in order for the larger management company to take care of their funds?
And so, so there, there is one fee break.
Okay.
Um, where the smaller schools pay us thirty-five basis points up to a certain level, and maybe then over that is twenty basis points, but nobody pays us more than thirty-five basis points for what we provide.
Can you tell me if the schools have paid a little bit more, right?
Well, once again, it's, so, so every school, including Chapel Hill, gets, um, I, I, it's thirty-five basis points on the first fifty million. And then twenty basis points on everything over that.
Okay.
So Chapel Hill pays thirty-five basis points on fifty million, and then they pay twenty basis points on essentially remaining six billion. So that's why it comes very close to twenty basis points. Whereas a school that has five hundred million will pay thirty-five on fifty and twenty on forty.
Got it. Okay, that makes a lot of sense. Um, the thing that I want to point out uh about this, because I think it's going to be at, at least a theme of discussion tomorrow, um, that was will be for the board is, this is a really good example about University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. Um, frankly, you know, through, you know, us being great team players, um, really help other schools in the system access returns on their endowments that they otherwise would not have access to. And again, like, we do a lot for other schools in the system. And I just wanted to highlight that this is one really good example of this. And again, I think it's great and great career, it's an example of us working together to help everyone.
Yeah, no, I, I, I appreciate that. And I can tell you, I go to the various schools around the system and they, virtually all of them really, really, really honestly got appreciate what we did and understand how much value add they're getting from us. So that's a.
I would echo trustee Blaine's comments.
Simple question regarding AI. Um, you mentioned that the MICA seven have driven around fifty percent of the equity investment fund recently. Do you see a risk for UNC if the market trends change towards AI, like if there's ever a walk away from that success? Do you see a risk for UNC's financial future, since equity increase has been, is relying a lot on our vision intelligence?
Yeah, so we're pretty diversified. You know, that, that, that is in the twenty-six percent long equity bucket, and only about half of that is in, yeah, it's a little over, actually, sixty percent of it's in, let's say. Um, and in the short run, just like in two thousand, when the internet bubble popped, in the short run, we could have some valuation issues or whatever. But if, if we stick to our discipline and continue to stay disciplined, stay diversified, and over the long run, we'll be fine. But that's the whole key is to not have to settle when things go bad.
I have a question.
Yes.
I understand you are, you could, it could be your last presentation on even. Yeah, um, if so, I have a follow-up question. Okay. After twenty years, if so, retiring, who is replacing? Um, I, I just want to make sure that these states this way are better, because these two questions please.
I um, it was, it was after some soul searching, but I turned my baby facial blitis, I turned seventy in August. And I'm still young, I'm seventy-one. Go ahead.
And so, uh. That's you today. Okay.
So, um, so I made the very difficult decision that I'm going to retire at the end of the calendar year. There is a search committee that has been formed to find a replacement. The, what I made very clear to the CHIF Board of Directors and to them to the Search Committee is we have a great team in place at UNC Management Company. I stand up here and take all the credit, but the investment team at UNC Management is unbelievably good and has, they're the ones that are generating on-the-ground results. And we have a great portfolio that doesn't, you know, every portfolio can be tweaked a little here and there, but whoever comes in doesn't need to fix something that's broken, and that's kind of the key, is to find somebody who will, you know, kind of keep us on the course we've set.
So reserve final comments for Chancellor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things. One, I would, I would echo what trustee Blaine said about the service that we render to the other system schools. Not only is it significant in this regard, but I think provides a model for other possible shared services across the system. There are a lot of things that in this case in particular, the other system schools recognize that it would be inefficient and expensive to try to replicate investment management functions at each individual campus. They pay us an extremely modest fee to like for us to do it for them as we are already doing it at scale. And I think there are other services that are uh, uh, provided at each individual system school where bringing on to a, a shared services platform here at Carolina could, could make significant sense. It's something I've been working on and thinking about for, for some time, going back to my time in the, in the Budget Office. But my, my main reason for wanting to speak is just, we will, we will have a more full and formal thank you to John King. But just abstracting things up to the, to the highest level here, referring back to slide twenty-four. Ten years ago, we had two point nine billion dollars. We distributed two point two billion dollars, and we now have six billion dollars. Four point two of which was investment returns created by Mr. King and his team. You've seen all the statistics about relative performance and outperformance versus the benchmark, but if you just capture it that way, four point two billion dollars in ten years created by your effort. So thank you very much indeed for your service to the university. We're grateful.
Our next agenda item is an update on the Finance Committee's fiscal year twenty twenty-six responsibilities and focus areas from Vice Chancellor Knutson. Mr. Knutson.
Good afternoon. So I wanted to start with just uh highlighting the, the key areas of responsibility and authority for the Board of Trustees and the Finance Committee as we just think about the year in front of us. So start with just a, a, a calendar here on some of the key activities, and again, responsibility authorities for the Board of Trustees. First, all funds budget. You all have remembered five-plus years ago, a new requirement Boards of Trustees approved the all funds budget, and then it's submitted to the, the System Office and the Board of Governors for review. That timeframe really will be doing that uh really later this year. Um, we'll start to give updates here into the fall. And then it'll, will be in front of this body asking for approval in the March timeframe. Again, the Chair Cottis and I have had several conversations about just, one, the effort that we've, we've expended, I think a collective effort, board, a lot of work on, on, on the campus level, just to increase transparency around financial information on the campus. The next phase is really getting to that stage where we have a better understanding on performance relative to the dollars and what we're, what we're getting from them. So we'll, we'll talk about that. That'll be a theme through some discussion today. Uh, next annual report. Um, traditionally, our annual, our annual audit and financials are, are complete here at the end of the year. We present to the board our annual financial report in January. Uh, we have some changes in mind for that, and I'll talk about that in minutes. Uh, tuition and fees is another big area of responsibility and focus. I'll actually talk through a little bit of that today, just to, to tee up, I think, some of the key questions in front of this body. We'll be back in front of you in November, asking for uh, uh, approval in those areas. Um, of course, every meeting, you see a series of capital projects, real estate transactions, and there's always financial updates where we're just providing a, a, a bird's eye view of what's happening on the campus, maybe elevating some key issues that I think there's either intense foreign interest around or just areas that we think would be useful. On the capital projects, real estate transactions, real estate transactions, leases, capital projects, things where you're either advanced planning authority, um, debt items, uh, just any kinds of things that trigger in those spaces. You see that we went through a couple in the consistent agenda today. So beyond that, there are some big areas of focus for, at least for our team and at the university, that intersect directly with those responsibilities I just mentioned. You, one, one area is just thinking of a budget, budget, financial management, savings. We are obviously responsive to the board direction back in March to find seventy million dollars and have a budget savings plan in place. We are now really focused on execution. What does that look like to implement on the campus? I've got some updates for you on that here in a few minutes, but we'll talk through a little bit more detail. Service first, which is one component of that effort, is a massive undertaking. This is a restructuring of how we operate administratively at the university on various, various lines of service. It's, it's a big undertaking. Again, I got some updates uh on that. The Subcommittee on Capital Costs, uh, appreciation to the board members who participated already in, in one committee meeting last week. Um, that work is well underway. It's going to be a lot of work, but I also think it's gonna, it's, it's overdue in terms of just that focus on how we think about really moving towards not even just having some recommendations, but really an orientation toward action on how we can change some things to, to improve costs. And then performance, I mentioned just that, that annual financial report and how we might transition that to really a bit more of a, of a, a, a focus on, on metrics and thoughtful on how we are, are actually performing. Um, we, we want to get away from just showing you kind of the top line, just revenue is up X percent, expense is up Y percent, and the key drivers. But getting into really benchmarking on how we're doing against peers, other pieces on, on what that looks like over time and some of our key performance indicators. Again, with an eye toward, when we get to March and we're, we're in front of this body and asking you to think about our budget and our plans for the next year, whether to be confidence or, or an appreciation, or at least where we're at in terms of performance and how, what we're getting for some of those dollars. With that, uh, happy to take any questions on, on this portion.
Other questions for Mr. Knutson? Hearing none, our next agenda item is uh to hear a finance update.
Sure. So uh, I already mentioned a couple of things I want to get into in a little bit more detail. So here I'm going to try to cover uh really budget reductions, how we're approaching uh our budget management strategy right now at the campus. Some more on service first, and then lastly, I want to talk through tuition and fees. So first on reductions, uh, before talking about the campus level, it's important just to again revisit what's happening, what's the latest at the federal level, state level, and then even the system level, because those directly impact uh how we're, how we're charting a path through this, this uh time period. So first, federal level, um, we're continuing to monitor what's happening on appropriations and budget levels for our, our key funding agencies. Um, I think we're encouraged slightly that some of the most severe cuts look unlikely, but again, continuing to monitor that. The other big area of focus for us is just F and A and indirect. Um, there, there is uh proposed flat fifteen percent reimbursement cap um that, that continues to get a lot of discussion. I think negotiations right now are underway with OMB to think about more of a flat rate, but also to include more uh of those types of costs in direct costs. And so finding that balance, what that eventually looks like, we're, we're paying a lot of attention to. We're also thinking about what that means on campus in terms of just how we're going to explain that, how we're going to operate with, with those changes, and waiting to see what the final, final version might look like. At the state level, of course, no comprehensive budget yet. Mini-budget passed in July. I think the big news is it, it really uh UNC Chapel Hill was left largely unimpacted. I think uh there were, there was not enrollment funding or salary increase uh funds in that budget. There also weren't major cuts. There was a small, modest reduction to graduate tuition waivers, but overall uh not a big impact to UNC Chapel Hill. Question kind of moving forward, will there be another mini-budget? I, I I, I, I'm sure many of you have, have thoughts on that and can share. I think uh we're, we're, it's unclear at this point. We're, we're hopeful, but it's unclear. Um, you, you know, in terms of the System Office updates, uh, the, I, I'll talk about this a little bit more in, in the tuition and fee piece, but the, the bit, each year, the System Office puts out tuition and fee guidance that guides that process. This year, they're allowing us to consider resident undergrad tuition increases for the first time in a decade. Um, so we'll, we'll be working through that this year, this fall, uh, as we, as we think about that and bring something forward to you in November. Um, the, at the last meeting, we talked about the first stage of really allocation on R and R SCIF funds uh within the system. If, if you remember, there's three buckets of R and R dollars. There's minor R and R. There's major R and R, which is a, a slightly larger than your, your smaller couple hundred thousand dollar um projects up to a few million dollars. And then there are named projects. So they allocated the first two buckets, the minor and the, the major. Um, I'll show you a slide here in a minute just on what major R and R dollars it looked like over the last several years and what it looks like in the foreseeable future. Uh, the performance pool, they talked, there was a, a decision by the Board of Governors initiated by the System Office to reallocate funds within the UNC system. Um, UNC Chapel Hill will lose a recurring dollar amount of seven million dollars through that effort. Got some additional uh slide on that. And then also just another area of focus is just the continued focus on administrative staff growth and expenses. It's an area that.
Sorry. Yeah, before we move off the um performance pool, I know I, I'd like to comment on that, and I think um trustee Blaine might as well. You know, that was funded originally as a bonus performance um for the schools. It was not a tax to be assessed on the current schools and then a reassessment. Um. The legislature had concerns about the metrics that were being used for that allocation and did not fund it. And instead, we effectively wind up with a, a tax on Chapel Hill. We've been, as we noted earlier, we've been a team player providing additional benefit to other schools. We're proactive on cuts. We've shared services, and we've got our own shared services and talking about expanding that to other schools. And when you look at our overall performance in terms of any sort of metrics, for whether it's graduation rates or ROI, we are a strong performer. So I'm disappointed by that cut, and um I think that should be something that uh is revisited or that the legislature should uh look at how that funding works, uh, because it's, it's really just not fair, it doesn't uh provide the correct incentive for the schools.
I, I did want to share just on those points, just a couple of illustrations on, on both the R and R allocation and the performance funding that, that uh Chair Cottis just referenced. So on the R and R, here is again that third bucket, the major R and R, so the major dollars for capital. This is over the, the more recent time period here, where you've got prior appropriations this biennium, and then really out of the SCIF that cash flowed dollars into projects by campus. And so you can see UNC Chapel Hill kind of compared to the rest of the system here in terms of aggregate dollars authorized for uh projects, for capital projects here uh in the immediate time horizon. Again, you can see, we generally compare um our, our square footage and number of buildings and uh facility condition would all put us toward the top of that list. The funding does not quite match that here, as you can see. And then with respect to performance funding, um, as, as, just a, a little bit more on this, you can see that what you're, what you see here are two tables that were presented by the System Office to the Board of Governors last week. Um, again, the larger context around performance funding. So enrollment funding uh was, was. So enrollment funding, uh, was, was the, the formula changed several years ago. As part of that effort, there was an introduction of a performance element. The performance element, as Chair Code has mentioned, it was not funded through the legislature the last couple of years. I think the, the system office initiated and felt that it was important to have a recurring source of funds for performance funding. Without the ability to get legislative funding for it, they turned to, uh, to self-finance it within the UNC system. The bulk of those dollars, nearly forty percent of that pool came from UNC Chapel Hill. And you see that on the right table there, the ten point eight million dollars coming from UNC Chapel Hill. And so that's what's leading to that, that net negative seven million dollar cut for our campus. I do want to just point out, that's not to Chair Codis' point, that's not a reflection of our performance. You can see the performance on the other side, even by the metrics that the system is measuring. We were generally middle of the pack in, in that area. So I don't think the dollar outcome is necessarily correlated with our performance.
And to clarify, that performance metric is based on improvement, not on absolutes. If it was on absolutes, we would be at the top of the list.
Correct. And that's one of the challenges. Everybody's starting from a, a different point. We, we, we are, we have our, our performance and graduation rates in debt in areas is, is toward the top of the country. And so it's, it, it's the way those goals were set and stretch goals were set were relative to that on a performance basis. So it wasn't, it didn't take into account our, our, our starting point in that respect. So an update, uh, so with that backdrop, obviously, you, you know, that colors a little bit about where we're at in terms of finances and this, and the budget savings. Of course, this, this plan, um, you, you remember this was a seventy million, this total seventy million dollars. These were the, the areas of reduction that we talked through our last board meeting. Um, I'm not going to go through each, each item, but I, I, we did add a status column to the right. And really that's meant just to give an update on, on where these are in terms of implementation and execution. You can see they're at different stages. That was to be expected. Some of this wasn't fully fleshed out yet. That was intentional. We wanted to work with campus constituencies to work through that together and collaborate on some of these pieces to, to really, uh, to have that input and make sure, uh, we were being as thoughtful as possible about the, about implementing. Uh, the two highlighted in blue vacancies and food purchases, those are, those are, those are already completed. So those are already, those are dollars that have been pulled centrally in. Um, got a couple more where the centers institutes, low performing academic programs, some work already being done on that. Uh, we expect to see a more concrete plan, at least internally, uh, in October. Will be in a position to share more with you in November. Several under, several other efforts that are underway and we'll provide more details in the coming months.
I have a question right here. Can you tell more about the administrative staff reductions and the other administrative efficiencies, like what those numbers include?
Yep. So the administrative staff reductions, I'll, I'll, I'll spend more time on here in a minute. That's that service first initiative where, where, um, we've been spending a lot of time getting together. We've, we've set up work groups, uh, task forces across campus. Spending time thinking about our operating model and what we mean by that is just how we're going to be structured organizationally. Is there an opportunity for shared services? How would we structure that? What types of services will be in scope? And then how might we think about our staffing models in, in those spaces? And so starting to wrestle with some difficult data, difficult discussions, but a really good input by the campus and, and we're working through that now. Uh, the other administrative efficiencies that, that's really a large part of that is, some of it was our search function being more efficient, like using, thinking of being more deliberate about executive search. Can we use internal more instead of always using firms? Or at least having a, a little more robust decision criteria around it. Also, the number of people involved in this, is there a way to make that more efficient? Thinking about remote and hybrid work. Matching up a, a, we, we are now at a, at a place where we're going to roll out some new guidance around um, expectations by job category. The, it's, it hasn't changed dramatically in terms of our guidance, who would be eligible. What has changed though are the, are the managers and, and there's been a lot of turnover in leadership. And so the view, we're now several years past what, um, where, where this kind of took shape coming out of COVID. And I think people are thinking about it differently. And I, and I, I've heard a lot of people on campus actually welcoming the ability just to rethink how we're operating and the expectations around, around the unit. So I, that's going to be happening this fall, but that's going to be matched up with what we're doing on the space side, which we're trying to do to make sure those two things are working in unison. But we think the net, net of those will generate some savings as well.
What, what percentage of those vacancy cuts are uh, total? Um, let me, let me back up. I don't know how many vacancies there are, what, what the number of vacant positions are still out there. I just see people nine and five. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out like, what percentage does that represent of the total vacancies?
It's twenty-five percent of our total. It's a little bit higher percent of, of than that of our six months or older. And we've asked, we really looked at the six month or older number by, by unit and, and based it on that.
Oh, look, so six months or older is is the twenty-five percent?
It's higher than twenty-five percent.
But you only took twenty-five percent.
Of the total vacancies.
You took twenty-five percent of the total vacancies. You started with six months, but there are still, how many vacant positions older than six months?
I could get back to you on the specific number.
Percentage wise, ballpark.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look to my team. We can get back to you, pass some, some information there.
Trustee Valentine, are you maybe wanting a follow-up where, um, the team looks into, um, the vacant positions and we, we have that available for follow-up to you?
Yeah, especially if they're older than six months. Uh, sure. I mean, it looks like you just started with six months, but then only took a fraction of the six months. You want to know what that fraction was? How much, what's left? He said it's, that's only twenty-five percent of total. So that gives me a rough idea, but I'd like to know more. Yeah.
I'm sure some of those are going to be natural, uh, turnover. Um, I have seen, you know, back when I was on BOG, um, some schools use a banked approach where they're banking. Um, that, but I, I don't think that's the case here.
I appreciate that question. I, I know the vacancy area is getting a lot of scrutiny, both system office, state auditor, um, or report is due on that as well. So I, I know that it's going to continue to be an area of scrutiny. We were trying to find the right balance to preserve some flexibility with units who believe some of the vacancies are really critical to moving forward. Of course, when there's, when there starts to be a certain amount of length, whether or not unfilled, I think it raises more questions, which is why we were trying to calibrate this for the six months or, or older. Um, we can bring you more information.
And to your point, that, that probably is even more useful, the department by department analysis to see if there is any banking and certain response.
Absolutely.
Just a one more question, you know, a couple of months uh, forward from our last update on this, you still feeling a high level of confidence around our ability to, to achieve the cuts as laid out here?
I do, I do. I feel, I feel, I feel we've already got some portion either booked or significantly underway. And so I, I feel like we've made, we're making progress and I think we will.
Terrific. And I, I would just encourage us to hold, you know, hold firm to those numbers. And if anything, we go a little deeper and if we have to add back later, we do. But it's, you, you get kind of one, so these are hard to do. And when you take a swing at it, I think we've got to get it done.
Yeah, thank you. Chair Turner?
Uh, unit optimization, can you remind me, what, what is that? What's, what's in there?
Yeah. So a, a couple of units came forward and identified savings to us, uh, either a, a few units, the graduate school athletics. Um, the collaboratory came forward with some savings where there was opportunity there. We were working on a couple of others where there may be some, some larger restructuring or reorganizations that can yield some savings as well. Be happy to follow up with you a little bit more on that. Well, I think some step forward, uh, volunteered, really knew this effort was underway. Um, others, you know, there's always a conversation about where, where, where there might be some, where we believe there may be some opportunity to consider and think about that. So I think it's really a combination of those, those conversations.
Other questions?
Okay. And then I did want to, did want to just, we, we had a little bit of conversation already on this topic, service first. This is our effort to really get at administrative operations. How can we in, in, improve quality? But also with an eye toward operating more efficiently. It, and I do want to make this point, I think there's been some criticism, you know, why aren't we achieving some savings more quickly? Why don't we just find some staffing ratios, make some staffing changes and achieve some savings right away? I, I think what we're trying to do here is much more ambitious than that. It's really thinking about how to restructure how we operate, bend that cost curve a little bit more longer term. And, and it just, it's, it's, and it's also in, in an environment where we want to do that in partnership with the campus. And so I think when you think about that more holistically, it's just leading toward a little bit longer timeframe. Um, it, it's also when we think about what's in scope first, you know, we've already, when we're thinking about restructuring, reorganization, development, some activities already happened there. Our focus really that middle column, that's a lot of activity at the campus. Finance, procurement, HR, IT, comms, research, admin, significant amount of people, process. Um, so again, a, a lot of work underway. Um, we're still in the beginning stages on that right side of just thinking about academic operations and what's in scope. We have a steering committee, it's met several times. We have core work group where folks have, have been, have been, uh, going through data, really working with the functional task forces, task forces with representation across campus in, in each of these, uh, areas, uh, all the way from HR to, to research admin, working hard on, on, again, thinking about how are we going to be, how, how is our org structure going to look? What types of, of tasks and activities would be included in a shared service model? And then, and then what might that look like to improve service quality and, and with an eye toward efficiency? And again, looking at some comparative data through that process, asking ourselves some tough questions. Yeah. The, the, the steering committee, as a steering committee, we get updates, uh, every, every few weeks on the work of the task forces. The next big item is going to be, what does that org structure look like and making a decision on that? So how, are we going to have pods? Are we going to be more of a centralized model? Are we going to kind of stay similar to how we are structured right now? You know, there's a whole spectrum of how you can think about that. And it depends, it may depend on each of those service lines, the preference, or should some be together? And so I think we're wrestling with that. I, I, my intent is to provide updates to this body each time I'm up as this, as this progress goes through. I, I consider this to be one of the big efforts, uh, underneath the budget uh, management that, that really I think as we continue to move forward on that, we would, we would provide updates to this body. Um, and so I, I, I mentioned the, the big, the big tasks underway. I, I do think I'll, I'll skip ahead just to the takeaways, which is what I think really, again, when we look at data in aggregate, we are, we are decentralized on certain administrative areas, especially those that we are focused on compared to our peers, and that gives us some opportunity. The, the, the counter to that is where we're more centralized compared to our peers. And that is facilities, research, administration. We tend to be more efficient than our peers as well, like in terms of spending. So I think that's, that's instructive. Again, we're, we're working through that data on, on campus. And again, we are not losing sight of the quality component. There is, there is a commitment from us to define how we operate, define what that looks like in terms of service levels and to not backslide on that as we go through this process and, and really think some about technology and if there's a way to, to improve on those areas.
Trustee White?
Yes, thank you. So on the administrative service reorganization, you said the development piece has been achieved.
Yeah.
Um, so to help me understand, so is that, what, what does that look like? What have we achieved? And then how does that factor into the, the management fee, the one percent?
Yeah. So I think the structure has been changed there. So you've got the lead development officers with, with a, the, in terms of where their reporting relationship, how that's changed. Instead of just being strictly to individual units, individual deans, there's now a, a more of a, a, a shared reporting relationship to, to central development and to those, those unit leads. With that, I think there's, there's a feeling there's better alignment, better opportunity to really think institutionally transformed, like bigger, bigger gifts and bigger transformational opportunity. How does that relate to the endowment administrative fee? I think, again, that, that fee is what is really providing dollars to fund those development operations, the people and, and the salary there and the expenditure there. So often you, you heard John mention how it's changed over time. A lot of times the level changes with where you're at in a campaign. And so as you, it's not uncommon across higher ed, as you start to contemplate a new campaign to see that potentially kind of move up. It can move up temporarily, but a lot of times it can move up just to help finance personnel associated with that.
And so I know, um, Jonathan said that the, the fee was decided at the university level. Who decides that at the university level in the amount?
Well, the, the Chapel Hill Investment Fund Board is actually the one who approved the fee level. But the university would often, I, I believe in the past, and again, I wasn't here when it was last contemplated a change to it. But my understanding is the university initiated that in, in consultation with individual, uh, associations and really brought forward that, that change of, of a, a strategy around um, what that might look like in terms of the increase, what it would be used for the dollars. And it was a pretty extensive conversation with the Chapel Investment Fund Board, but that board made the decision.
Presented by the university.
Correct.
I know you've got in here where you mentioned the uncomfortable and necessary conversations. I think that's probably even an understatement. It, this is extremely difficult and, uh, it's really, uh, something important that has to be done that y'all have not shied away from. So just want to commend you and your, and your efforts here.
Thank you, thank you. The, the, uh, the campus is working really hard on this and everyone deserves a lot of credit on the campus level just for engaging in, and I think what are some tougher, tougher conversations about that. I, I do want to mention also tuition and fees, who kind of turn it over to the last, that last, uh, topic here and just mention first, um, what we're, we're beginning stages of that process now, where we just got guidance from the system office. Um, we're going to be meeting internally on the campus, our tuition fee advisory task force, our student fee advisory subcommittee. Um, talking through, uh, what, what tuition recommendations and fee recommendations, uh, will look like. We will be bringing those back to you in November. It's, if, if the board approves, we'd be submitting that onto the, to the system office in December. The board of governors usually acts on those in the January to March timeframe, usually February. So that's generally where we're at. Again, guidance, just a couple of highlights from, from what we received from the system office. Again, they issue this every year. Um, undergraduate resident increases are, there, there is at least, uh, it's allowable to consider an increase up to three percent. Those, that, that proposal, any proposed increase would obviously be looked at. You can see a couple of the notes there about just looking at, at cost savings efficiencies, just the overall cost of attendance. Those are the, the, some of the, the areas that the system office has mentioned that the board will be looking at and thinking about the three percent or any kind of, any kind of proposed increases there. Undergraduate non-residents, just, just to remind the board, we've been, uh, we, we committed and looked at some data in the past about how far UNC Chapel Hill was from our peers. Um, looked at a multi-year strategy to try to close that gap and, and to try to close it pretty aggressively in the first couple of years. So a 10% increase this, this fall went into effect. Um, we have a decision in front of us kind of moving forward. What does that look like for this next year? Is, is, at, at that point in time, what we originally presented to you, and we might get into this, uh, in a minute, but it was, we had really a 10%, then tapering off to seven. And then, and then we thought we would close the gap. We were estimating that based on what others might do. The other, our peers are really increasing, uh, as well, they, at a, at a rate higher than we might've expected. So there may, it may contemplate us being more aggressive in this space. There's also other considerations around that, which, which we can talk through. On the student fee area, again, um, there's a three percent statutory cap on mandatory fees. As you might remember, we have a multi-year strategy here in place around funding a new campus rec and wellness center where we're kind of pledging our three percent for the next four years. So we did this, this year and we would do that. So it's, it's really spending all of our capacity there. The question being, is there, are there other fee increases that we'd want to consider that would have to be matched with an offset as well? And so that's kind of the question for us. And then obviously housing and dining rates will bring it to you. So some data on, on where we sit, uh, with respect to undergraduate tuition and fees. Here you can see- Here you can see, you know, on the resident side, UNC Chapel Hill, again, resident, it's tuition and fees. So about $9,000, public peer average without us in it. Over 14,000. So a pretty, pretty big difference. You can see among our, our peers set, only one, one of the public peers being below where we're at on the resident tuition side. On the non-resident side, at 45,000. Again, below the public peer average without UNC Chapel Hill. And if you start to go even tighter on your peer average, if you look at the Michigans and the Virginias. And the UCLA's significantly higher than even that, that public peer average. On the graduate side, a little bit more in line on the, on the non-resident side. On the resident side, again, below significantly where our public peer average is. A little bit on the history in terms of what's happened with tuition here. Again, I mentioned on the resident side, we have not increased resident tuition here in nine years. Undergrad, on the non-resident, you see that 10% in academic year 25, 26. Part of that strategy to, to be more aggressive there in closing that gap. We had been on a pace of 5% the two years before that. Again, we were trying to move in that direction. It, it was not enough because our, the, the peer institutions were moving at least. That, that aggressively and then before that, a little bit smaller increases. Graduate tuition has been a little bit more a mixed, either, we've either held the line flat or gone up a couple percent in the last, last two years. This is, this is more of just a line chart, kind of illustrating what I was talking about on the undergraduate non-resident side. Again, you can see our, our peer average in that green. The, the, but the top five Publix is really what we were, we were really aiming toward there on the, that up, that, that top line. And you can see what that looks like. And, and you can also see on the bottom line, kind of are the, the slope changing with the 9%, 9.7, the 10% increase. And really the bigger question for us kind of moving forward is what does that look like here? And we'll be bringing recommendations on that. Again, reminder on the rec and wellness center, that was, that was the, that's again, using all of our fee capacity for the rec and wellness center. And then lastly, just, just a quick reminder that again, our intent, going through our process internally, through those committees. Be bringing back recommendations to you in November in these areas. And I'll be following up with, with Chair Codis and Chair Turner, just on, on representation on the tuition and fee advisory task force. If the board would like to participate in that.
Thank you, Mr. Knufman. Couple thoughts. You know, we all know that we've got the constitutional requirement, Article Nine, Section Nine, to provide the benefits of the university to the people who stays freeze practical. And we have statutory requirements to make sure that the market rate for non-residents covers all costs for the degree. So there's no duty to non-residents, our duty is to residents of the state. And one of the ways that I think we can do that is look to keep our in-state tuition, especially for undergraduate, flat. And pursue raising non-resident tuition. But then also look at the qualifications for in-state or resident tuition. Because you do have people that may move here for a year. Establish residency and then get the lower rate. And I think that's a loophole that we could potentially close. In a way that might yield an awful lot of revenue for the state of North Carolina. And I would love for us to pursue that at the legislative level. Are there other questions for?
I want to go back to unit optimization. On the one hand, I applaud the few units. Who did come forward, I think that's real leadership and stewardship, I think that's terrific. As I thought about it further, I wonder about the many units who have not, did not come forward. And I just wonder, can and should we be playing more offense in that respect? Going forward, I note the number for those few units and. I don't know, I, I, I'm just curious your thoughts there as a matter of ongoing discipline. Going forward, again, the many units who did not come forward. Any thoughts?
It's a great comment. I think, I think a couple of things. One, there are a few other things in scope there that, that I could, I, I'd be happy to follow up with you more offline. We're, we're not at that stage where I think we're in a position to talk about it here, but there are bigger restructurings. That I think could really improve how we operate on the campus. Two, I do think that administrative staff effort is going to affect everyone. So I don't think anybody's going to, to. Escape from, from impact or, or be, being touched by what we're doing at the institution. So I think there's some, there's some engagement. But to your point. There, there certainly, we can, we can consider whether there are areas. That we feel deserve additional focus there on optimization and, and thinking about whether there's more. We, that was part of the calculus, getting there on the original piece was looking at the kind of, it was a two-way conversation. To some degree, right? Some, some did bring forward, but we also had some ideas about where there's some opportunity. And so. We drew that line at a certain place, we could, we could think about drawing that line at a different place and expanding that group. And that's something we can continue to think about.
Trustee Lloyd.
Thanks. Couple of questions and a comment. Thank you. When you think about the nine years of flat tuition. And you think about who has eaten the fact, who's eaten that benefit? Has the state appropriated considerably more? I know we appropriate more than many states and I'm very grateful for that. But is, is our state legislature funding that gap? Or are the constituents of our university having to consume? A lower than appropriate allocation towards just good enough operations?
It's a great question. I mean, I think it's, it's put a, it's put a premium on expense side management on campuses at, at the university level. I think that's why you're seeing, I, I believe that was part of the impetus for the all funds budget process. That's why we've been in this posture where we've had to have a better understanding of how we operate. Expenses associated with it to be more efficient. I do think there have been increases from the legislature that's certainly helped. So that, that is, that is part of the equation. But I think the other part is we've had to, we've had to manage, we've had to improve our toolset. Part, part of what I'm going to talk about in the next slide deck is more about that, about, about being able to have more information available. To us to be able to help us manage and make better decisions on efficiency side. You can see that's why some of these efforts are aimed at that.
To your point. We can keep it flat and honor the constitution if we account for it some other way. But I, I now have, including my stepchildren, five of five children who have come to Carolina in the last eight years. I have two sons here now. I'm going to lose with my third son, but anyway, I have, I have two here now and I say it every time and I can't say it strongly enough. The move in experience where elevators are down. The, the condition of our dorm rooms. The kinds of pervasive problems we accommodate, things that should not be tolerated. We have got to get to a good enough standard that matches our brand, that matches what we profess to be. And what we seek to be, and we are among the most desired out-of-state. Universities in the country to attend and, and our, our applications show that. But then great students and great families get here and they are very disappointed and it's a joke. And, and you know, as someone who helps, you know, try to recruit for Carolina and market Carolina all over the country. And when I lived out West, you know, people look to me as though I'm responsible, especially now on the trustees. And I would just ask, well, first of all, yay, let's get more tuition. We still meet the standard, we're the second least expensive public university in the country. But, but we need to stop tolerating that level of below. Acceptable operations, particularly for our first years. And their experience being admitted and moving into their dorms and getting their classes. We have got to provide good enough for, for what people are paying and. Let's stop accommodating it. Thanks.
I think those are great comments, Trustee Lloyd. And you know, especially in areas like auxiliaries, like housing that don't come from the state budget but are self-funded. We really have no one else to look around to except ourselves for why things are operated a certain way. The capital cost subcommittee hopefully will address some of the larger ticket items because when we spend. You know, a few hundred million dollars on a project, that's money that could have been allocated instead to ops. If we can find ways to trim back substantial costs there, because those are huge numbers that the state continues to have to fund. And we have to fund internally and R and R is another big one too. And I think there we've seen, we still need significant operational changes to make sure. That the south building has a roof on it or other things like that get finished. But those are great points that you brought up, Trustee Ballantyne. Okay, Trustee Alarice.
Yeah, so I know the Board of Governors is really discussing a lot on campuses to increase tuition by 3% finally, after. The nine, 10-year, 10-year track so far. But based on the constitution you and I had, with the tuition freeze, it's sort of, it's difficult for us to see a true. Income from tuition increases because when a student comes here, a 3% increase is $21 in their tuition. And we can't increase it for four years because there's a, there's a tuition guarantee for, for, for four years. Do you truly think that in-state tuition increases will be a sustainable? Way for us to actually see an increase in, in, in revenue? The point I'm trying to make is, is it truly going to help us increase that money? Like, I don't think it's, it, it, it seems like a good, big opportunity to a lot of people who don't understand the numbers. But with the freeze, it's really difficult to achieve that. So if you can expand on that.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for mentioning that. The fixed tuition policy really does, from a revenue standpoint, it does cap the dollars available to the institution. So even if we were to pursue or recommend a 3% increase on residents, we could only do that on the incoming class, right? Now, of course, over four years, if you did that each year, you could, it starts, it starts to build up. But in one year, you're, you're correct, it's, it, it does limit that. From the, of course, from the, the. Family or the student perspective, of course, there's some certainty, so that's, that's the other side of it, right? They have some certainty there, but from the revenue side, that's the challenge.
I, I really appreciate your comments about the in-state tuition and the, the state of our. Campus physically. You know, I had a, someone reach out to me whose daughter was in the brand new, totally remodeled Avery dorm down by the. Baseball stadium the first day. Someday she moves into school and there's water pouring through the roof. Anytime anybody turns on the shower upstairs, there are no outlets installed. When you flush the toilet and it's exploded everywhere. I mean, it was like the scene out of Goonies where they're shaking the pipes underground and throwing people around the bathroom. And that's a brand new remodeled dorm. Now, much to the credit of the facilities department. Her parents told me that they got it taken care of within 24 hours, so kudos to them. But you know, it really does make you wonder, you know, what are we doing with our contractors? That's a brand new dorm and you've got the, the, the problems with the physical plant that you're talking about. But I just want to point something out to you all that I think should be of. Great concern as it relates to raising tuition on this campus. We did a big, big tuition increase on out-of-state students this, this past year, 10%. And that's, that's a lot by any standard it applies to everyone, there's no lock-in like the in-state students have. I think that generates, Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, somewhere in the vicinity of $15 million. And I'm curious, this is a question I have for you in a minute, but. At the system level, and bear in mind, they encouraged us to raise our out-of-state tuition in order. To try to make sure out-of-state students are covering the cost of their education here, which is the objective you pointed to Marty. But what I want to point out is. They adopted a plan last week. That. You know, and it's a performance plan, the performance plan is a challenge for us because our metrics are so high to start with in absolute terms. I don't, you know, I think some of these system schools that have graduation rates in six years of like 30%. They ought to be rewarded for improving their graduation rate to 36%. Our graduation rate for your peers around 90%. It's really hard to improve that number. I do believe that it's our Pell students that we are judged on in terms of improving our graduation rate. But their graduation rate is still really, really high. So it's really hard for us to make progress. But what I want to point out to you is we raised. Tuition by $15 million on our out-of-state students last year at the urging of the system office. And the Board of Governors in order to make sure that we are not subsidizing those students. Came up with a performance plan. That somehow managed to suck. Seven of that $15 million off of this campus and give it to other schools. So you know, as we think about whether or not we should raise tuition. I think you just need to. You know, be aware of what's going on. And you know, think about. Whether or not. We want to raise tuition on our students. If the money's not going to be used to address issues on this campus.
I think that is a great point, Trustee Blaine. Because by your math, almost, you know, 50 cents of every dollar that our out-of-state parents paid went to some other school.
Even this history major can do that math, Trustee Allison.
Which, which as a, as a. You know, as a parent who paid for two kids to go here from out-of-state, most of them probably wouldn't be very happy about that. So it's all does interplay together. I mean, we have to think about. Because this, to call this performance funding is a farce, it's a tax.
And as a seem to be out-of-state tuition payer, they would pay a lot more to go to the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill.
As a follow-up to Trustee Blaine's comment about Avery. Which was my freshman dorm in 1987 with two of the roommates in a two-person room. Three of us in there. I would have been glad to see it demolished, I think, and. I do think we have to consider historic preservation versus modernization. And if we're going to offer modern amenities to our students. That may mean tearing down some of these older buildings. And putting up something, especially in that location, it would have had a fantastic view looking back over. The fields behind it, if you had a, a new 10-story building there instead. So I think we've got to think about that as, and this is not something we necessarily discussed in the last capital cost subcommittee. But for planning things out, what is that cost of historic preservation versus? Modernization and what do the students really care about? I certainly would not care to be in Avery again, no matter how nice it is, except for the location, but.
I was going to say, as someone who spent my freshman year on the ninth floor of Hinton James with no air conditioning, three people in Avery sounds like a really good deal.
Are there other questions for Mr. Knufman? Okay. Go on to the next section, ROI.
Yep, last section and I'll, I'll be brief on this one. This is Chair Codis and I talked about, and he asked to, to really. Have, have some discussion around ROI and just thinking about. How we're thinking about, about return on investment at, at the university. I think, you know, first. It, it's an important tool for evaluation in higher education. We, we see the importance of it. The College Cost Reduction Act certainly has some, some, I think, metrics in there that we are, that we are thinking about in terms of internalizing in several different ways. You, you, you all might be, remember the system ROI study where there was an effort undertaken there at the system level to look at by campus and by program. What kind of return was generated? I got some more information to share on that and, and just. Lastly, just a couple of highlights on what we're doing on campus to think about how we incorporate ROI. So, so first, you know, from a, from a current state. One, we've talked a little bit about that academic program review. We, we expect to have some form of ROI, so those principles in, in, included in that as we think about what that might look like. As part of that effort to, again, the, the idea there being trying, looking at identifying savings of $2 million as part of that $70 million reduction plan. Again, we'll have some more to react to in October and we'll be bringing you updates in November. The system office ROI study, I mentioned that before. If you remember, we were a very strong performer in that, but part of the equation was missing. It only had wage data on North Carolina graduate. Students who are then working within the state of North Carolina. We're working, the system office is now working with the Department of Census. To try to get data on nationwide on what our employment outcomes look like. So that's, that's, that's exciting, I think also. Lastly, we've, we've contracted with Helio Campus, which is a, a group that looks at. lastly, we've, we've contracted with Helio Campus, which is a, a group that looks at spending and analytic tools on, on campuses across higher ed, but it's, the, the idea here being just accelerating how quickly we can have more comprehensive review or more comprehensive tools to look at academic performance in different areas. Here, here's a, just a slide on just the who's participating in this consortium. I mentioned the Census data. Again, this is us giving data to the, the Census Bureau about, about graduates of the institution and then getting data back. You can see several institutions across higher ed or across the country are doing that. So these are the percentages of institutions within those states that are already participating. We're in that pending column. Hopefully, we'll, we'll be, we'll be in the included column shortly. You can see the data we might expect to see, you know, whether that's one, five and 10 years out earnings by different, different areas. You can also see, you know, within a program, how that might match to industry. So again, some of the output I think is exciting just to be able to, again, get a little bit finer detail on earning potential and just what that return looks like. The Helio Campus data, just a little bit more on this. Here, you're just looking at a summary of the outputs. I do, I do want to note, several of these outputs are looked at on campus already. People, people are, are, are looking at this information to, to really think about and understand how, how operations and performance on campus, but it, it's not comprehensive. And the, the, the idea of partnering here with Helio Campus is there are really strong visuals and I think just expanded access, again, improving the toolset for campus to really think about making management decisions in these areas. So whether that's looking at, at course level margins, capacity for instructors, demand measures either at the course level or even just what trends look like on student credit hour enrollment.
Here, before we go off that slide, those bottom three, to me, are game changers for the data that we'll be looking at because you start looking at what we can teach, what the demand is, how we're handling that. These are all concerns we've had before when we're talking about things like students trying to sign up for a class and not having enough sections open. This data, I think, will be transformative for the university. So I really appreciate you working on that.
We're, we're excited about what this, what this can offer. And again, some of it's being done already on campus. So it's, it's not, it's just a way to, to, I think, improve, kind of taking some complicated data and trying to crystallize that into, into a few views that are really rich, I think, and, and helpful to look at. And this is just an illustration, thinking about margin, just what that looks like, credit hours on the x-axis. And we're looking at margin on the, on the y. You can just see an array by, by program. Instructional utilization, again, just a, again, an illustration on, on who teaches what classes and kind of thinking about that by, by type of faculty, whether it's tenure, tenure track. And obviously that's going to differ by undergrad versus professional, by discipline. But some, again, some informative information. Same thing on the expense side. This is, this is really looking at for every instruct, for every hour an instructor teaches, how many student hours are they, are they teaching? And so you can kind of, one measure of instructor productivity, again, going to differ by discipline, undergrad, grad, but still a, a starting point for some good, good analysis. And, and I think broader, just stepping back, again, we, we're thinking about, we're continuing to think about return on investment, what that looks like, how it can be integrated into what we're, what we're doing at the campus. You know, we think, we've talked a lot about what it means, what it might look like to be the number one public institution and our aspiration there. We, we see this being a component. We see it being a component in our performance metrics, either at the institutional, how we perform, or even in with individuals. And then that last point, we just continue to want to, to build on it with accountability and transparency and trying to, to have these tools available. Happy to expand on any of that.
Any questions? Trustee Lloyd?
It's really helpful and thanks to trustee Blaine for his comments. It's so important and powerful to be able to set your own metrics and your own incentives and grade yourself based on what you determine is important. And I, I do applaud the way, the many ways that the System Office focuses on things that matter to the citizens of North Carolina. And, and they do a great job and we have done really well hitting those metrics. I wonder if we've ever had a metric that includes consumer satisfaction along the lines of the kinds of concerns this board has continued to raise. And I bet if we did it correctly, it would be low in the areas that we've talked about, in, in lots of these areas. And, and, and that wouldn't, I mean, actually, if I were you, Chancellor, I would want that because that would be your baseline. You've only been here a year. It's not yet your fault. But, but it soon will be, right? I mean, your responsibility and that's your, in your, in your character to take responsibility, which I applaud. So the change in that, and I really think we should do it with parents and with students. I think we should have the, the courage to ask honestly and difficult questions of, of that, those types of things and then see if we can improve it. It's probably going to take like eight to 10 years. And, but I'd like to see that. I'd like to see us look at that instead of just celebrating the kinds of things that may look good on, on paper, but really aren't part of the day-to-day experience here as a student. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we couldn't agree more. We, we, we have a comprehensive benchmarking effort underway of which the Helio Campus data is an important component, but only one component. And I think satisfaction of students, parents, faculty, staff are all important benchmarks to include. Thank you.
Trustee Brian?
Yeah, I was just gonna reiterate, and I think there's a conversation with somebody on the parents, one of the parents councils. This is a little while back, but it was exactly to your point of it, are we doing a parent survey? And we actually had some conversation about, I think she might have started, they might have started to do some work. I don't know where that sits, but I do think it's, would be really significant. And to your point, establish a baseline, which would probably not be, not be great.
Any other final questions? Trustee Alaris?
Yeah, I think that, that's a great idea. You know, I think the university, it would be a good idea for the university to set its own goal to commit to improve, improving the student experience. I think that that's one of the main concerns about students. We are a campus of 34,000 people and oftentimes, you know, people just say, I'm not heard or the university doesn't care about my concerns. So I think that the university is sort of starting its own challenge to improving this by setting strict metrics would be a great idea. And I think that, you know, as the university announces changes like enrollment growth, the main thing students have been pushing back is saying, we already don't fit. We already don't have enough libraries. We already don't have enough dorms. It sort of feels like, they feel like the administration is doing something against them. So I think that the university is saying, we are committed to student success and we'll have that presentation by Dr. Orr later, but setting metrics, I think, will be a good commitment and say, hey, we're committed to, to improving your experience at Carolina. The trustee Blaine called it, the customer experience of the university has to provide at the end of the day, so.
Just, just
trustee Allison?
Yeah, just to, to build on that, you know, I, I think this could be very interesting. Not only to gather these perspectives while our students are current students, but also after they graduate from Carolina, back to this ROI, did we deliver to them something that set them up well to succeed in the world? After they leave and collecting salary data and other things are, are very useful to measure the economic ROI, but there's other elements of ROI as well that we might, we might be able to glean if we did this on a longitudinal basis with our students. And then beyond that is their, our graduates.
There's probably similar in the hospitality industry and retail industry, you have a kind of reputation tracker type software. They'll monitor social media and then you can layer in different data into that as well. So we may want to see what data is available to already get a sense of what we're hearing out there. And then we can add to that with additional questions that we would ask. Trustee Minkins?
Yes, I, I've been on the board for six years and I just want to congratulate you and this, this committee because this is probably one of the most productive meetings I've ever been involved in. And it was good to see some of you Board of Governors guys, see the little Tar Heel coming in.
Well, it's all because of Vice Chancellor Knufman and his team and of course the Chancellor. So without objection, we will stand adjourned.
When I knew, wish I knew how to whistle.
I'm thinking maybe gavel.
I think a gavel would be good.
Greetings everyone and welcome to the September meeting of the Committee on External Relations. As Chair of this committee, double speaking here. As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the state government's Ethics Act, Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before this committee today, please identify it at this time. Seeing none, hearing none, I'll ask Chris McClure to please call the role.
Chair Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Valentine. Mr. Alvarez.
Here.
Mr. Blaine.
Here.
Mr. Bryan.
Here.
Mr. Codis.
Here.
Mr. Meekins. Mr. Turner.
Mrs. White.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to review and approve the open and closed session minutes of the July 30th, 2025 meeting. Has anyone had a chance to review those minutes? Guessing that is a yes. Do I hear a motion to approve the open and closed session minutes of July 30th? I got a second. Any discussion, debate? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. This action item approved by the committee will be placed on the consent agenda for the full board's approval tomorrow. Our first informational item this afternoon is to discuss really our strategy for how we want to present the university to the citizens of the state as well as to the nation and the world. And I would like to, to thank everyone that's here for their role in shaping the university's course over these past several years. And that of course includes the chancellor, the administration, our faculty, students, former and current trustees and friends of the university. In my opinion, we really have a very compelling story to tell. And again, I'm hopeful that this conversation will help us decide how we tell it and what we share with, with our society as a whole. Financially, we addressed longstanding challenges head on. We eliminated a hundred million dollar structural deficit and adopted an all funds budget to improve transparency and accountability across every university unit. Earlier this year, we also executed a self-imposed fifty million dollar internal budget sequestration, demonstrating fiscal discipline that will strengthen the university's long-term resilience. On academic freedom, we reaffirm the Chicago Principles, banned compelled speech and hiring and evaluations, and codified institutional neutrality as a core value. These steps underscore our belief that a public university must be a forum for free and civil debate, not a participant in it. We also acted with principle and foresight on equity issues, passing a non-discrimination resolution before the SFFA decision, fully complying with the Supreme Court's ruling and executing the largest DEI-related reductions in the UNC system. We launched SKILL, the School of Civic Life and Leadership, as a national model for assuring balance and viewpoint diversity in higher education, while modeling civil discourse for our students. Institutionally, we made bold leadership changes and empowered our audit committee to enhance oversight and accountability. In terms of campus safety, we passed a campus safety resolution, increased support for law enforcement, and ensured academic continuity in the face of civil unrest on our campus. And still we have grown. This year brought record undergraduate applications, high graduation rates and average alumni salaries, strong ties with state and federal partners, and national momentum across both athletics and academics. These are serious reforms that we should all be very proud of. And we were able to achieve them through thoughtful governance and unwavering focus on excellence. As we begin today's discussion, I invite each of you to share with which areas resonate most personally and where you see continued opportunity. Our diversity of insight is part of our strength. Thank you. With that, I would like to open the floor for discussion. Trustee Codis?
Yeah, I just want to again kind of recognize Vice Chancellor Knopfman as team and the chancellor for the work on the budget as well as all these other items. I do feel like when this, when several of us joined the board in 2021, there was, there were rampant accusations of discrimination and we have hit that head on and ensure that there will be no discrimination occurring on campus. So I'm really proud of that and want to make sure every student here has the, a equal opportunity. On the campus safety resolution, again, I think that's model campus safety that other universities are looking to now and that the federal government has, has appreciated. And we, we were forward, we were ahead of our time on that when we passed it. And I think that it's establishing a safe environment on campus. But there is, to your question, I think there's more work to be done. And I know we're going to hear a presentation on that in University Affairs today. But a live response center, additional cameras will help us be prepared because we don't want to be reactive. And I think that's the, the main takeaway is let's be proactive on these things. And if we need to spend some money on the front end, better now than having something happen and we're having to address it later. So, and I would, those would be the main things I would have resonated with me.
Thank you. Trustee Bryan?
Thanks Chairman Jones. I really hadn't thought a lot about saying something today, but I, you know, your commentary was really helpful reminder. And, and you know, I think we've done a lot to, you think about institutional neutrality or you know, our free speech ratings from FIRE or Greens. And you know, one of the things I always think is you can have, we, we have set the table well, but it doesn't, it doesn't make an actual culture where you eat and fellowship together, right? And so, but we've, we've put the things in place to, to, to really robustly actually get to the point of, I think fellowshipping with people you may not always agree with in a healthier way, a better way. So I'm really excited about seeing the opportunities for that to actually happen on campus more and more. I mean, again, I think the, the policies are there. I hope we get to see it. I mean, I hope it's a reminder to all of us as we've, you know, we're always, I guess everybody thinks they're living in interesting times, but if you get doom scrolling on social media sometimes and, and want to, you know, I try to say I just got to get off here and not get mad at people when you're not actually having a conversation with them. And I was reminded of the GK Chesterton quote, when he was asked what was wrong with the world and he responded, I am. And I think there's a sense of, for all of us, we are both the problem and the solution. I love working with the folks on this board. From those I almost always agree with to, to those that I, that I don't necessarily always agree with. There's always challenge and camaraderie and just a great opportunity. I hope our board continues to reflect what we want to see on campus. So just appreciate you opening up the floor for that.
Thank you, trustee Bryan. Any trustee Alvarez?
Yeah, I want to take a second to, to first of all congratulate everyone here and faculty and students as well for the recent rankings that just came out of the university. We are the nation's fourth best public university as of yesterday. And I mean, this is just proof that the university continues to be excellence and they continue to represent the incredible value that North Carolina brings to the country. You know, we have seen this year, students who were Truman Scholars, Marshall Scholars. We have the highest number of Fulbright scholarships at any public institution in the country. Continuously faculty and students continue to be awarded Fulbright, Fulbright awards at the university. And I think that, you know, nationally, we have a lot of respect and internationally as well. I've just, I was just speaking for our, to a couple of friends in Indonesia and they knew what UNC was. They, they, they knew what the university was and they knew the excellence that, that we have in, in the United States. So I just want to acknowledge that, that we continue to be at the top of the summit and we continue to challenge ourselves as, as former Chair Prior constantly said, we are on track to be the best public university in the world. And I think that faculty and students are such a key component of that as well.
Thank you, trustee Alvarez. Any other comments, thoughts from anyone? Seeing none, I would really, and my hope with sharing this is not just to have a rah rah session or to simply pat ourselves on the back. I don't think that we have done the best job in, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Meekins.
Well, I punched in late and it's hard for me because I don't want to sound like a sourpuss because I think we have done some wonderful things. And I could go down the list. You've, you've done several of them. I know for one, I think we're a much safer campus right now in part because of what Marty Codis has done and we have done as a board. I think he's hired one of the best chiefs we could have ever found. And he has been very diligent in convincing all of us to, to, take heed and to concentrate on student safety. And I think that's a great thing. We've done a lot of positive things, but I, but as y'all know, I'm, I'm sometimes a critic. And sometimes it's my nature. Sometimes it's because I look around the room and I see we look a lot alike. And I think we think a lot alike. And I think the most dangerous committee, board grouping of people is when everyone thinks similar things. So I have a tendency to want to jump in and say something. And so some of the things that you mentioned trustee Jones, we did, were not, in my opinion, the best. I don't want to go into detail about criticism, but if you talk about campus drastic leader, leadership change. And you talked about DEI and you talked about the SFFA case. You know, this campus, we spent millions of dollars fighting for the right to consider race in some fashion on a holistic basis when we admitted our students. And I, and we fought for that. I mean, prior boards fought for that. And I was proud of that and still proud of that. And I don't think we should have, and, and the Supreme Court has spoken, so we, nothing we can do about that. But I didn't think we needed to celebrate it. I think we needed to absorb it and deal with it, which we've done. And I think our university has done a great job. Same with DEI. Nobody wants to talk about DEI and what, nobody knows what, what we're really talking about here. But you know, I don't think we should be scared of continuing to talk about where some element of looking at that issue and thinking to ourselves, where can we make improvements? Where do we see places where people aren't treated fairly or where, where we as a grouping of people don't have enough diverse thoughts or diverse people from different places or different colors? Not to force any quotas because I know that would not do good. And I'm not suggesting that. But to at least talk about it and, and ask the question, why is it? Why don't we have more diversity? Why don't we have more people that look different or think differently? And then do something intentionally about it, whatever that might be, so long as it's fair and legal. So anyway, not to, not to harp on those kinds of things, but I just don't want to say we're proud of all these things. But some of the things you've mentioned, you know, I'm not so proud of. I think we got an excellent, incredible chancellor. But we had an excellent, incredible chancellor. And, and so when you talk about regime change, I think we could do a better job of how we deal with those issues and not try to go too fast when we want to make change. So there's some things we need to do better. And when I say we, I'm not going to be on this board for, but, but for two more years. And so I just, you know, I just want to make sure we're not an echo chamber, make sure we're not patent our, you know, our, our faculty, our administrators, our chancellor's office, our students. That's why we're the number one university in the country for the money and hope to be one day overall as far as a public. But it's going to be because of them and we just, we have to be vigilant. We have to be more aware of that and be kinder to them and, and, and give them a voice more than we do now. And I'll shut up.
Thank you, trustee Meekins. Trustee Codis?
Friendly commentary here. So, you know, I agree with Ralph. I think diversity of opinions are needed. And I don't know that we have that right now on campus. We have enough diverse opinions. And I think, you know, unfortunately, I think there's been a focus on diversity of immutable characteristics rather than diversity of ideas. And to your point, why we don't have a diversity of immutable characteristics, we probably need to start looking more to root causes rather than window dressing and then perhaps not getting to the underlying causes. So I agree with you. I think that everyone here should be able to speak up. Ralph should be able to speak up and have a difference of opinion and voice his concerns. And I want to be able to do the same things. I think, and I really appreciate that SKILL is leading the charge on that. And our efforts to include, thanks to Jenna Robinson here, the first year free speech module and getting folks talking more civilly because in the wake of the whole Charlie Kirk assassination, I think that that's, if we can provide one benefit to our students, it would be that they feel comfortable talking about difficult issues and not feel resort to, the need to resort to violence.
Thank you, trustee Codis. Trustee Alvarez?
Yeah, sir. Just want to jump back to.
Yeah, sir, just wanna jump back to, to trustee Mekans' comment. And we know that there's been a nationwide trend that has walked away from diversity, equity and inclusion policies. But I have seen firsthand how this has changed some of the physical spaces on campus. And I'll provide a couple of examples, but my predecessor, Jalia Taylor, one time released a statement about how last year, when she went to Black Student Convocation, an event that the Black Student Movement put together, she noticed the room was not anywhere near what it looked like the year before. And, and to a lot of people that, that did feel like their sense of community was, was being taken away. And, you know, there's this event called Pop-Up Fridays where the black community gets together and dances on campus. And in something my freshman year, I got to see a lot. And, and in the past few years, that's gone down significantly because people just don't feel like they, they have a sense of community anymore. And so, you know, I think that while we are, we are walking away of these policies, I do have to say that a lot of students truly feel defeated, I guess, by the fact that, you know, they're, they're, they're minorities on campus and, and perhaps affirmative action was, was taken away. And as you said, you know, perhaps we don't have to celebrate it because at the end of the day, some students do feel the consequences of it. They do feel like their environment changed on campus. My roommate, um, a black person, they constantly talk about how, you know, it just feels different. It feels like something changed. And at the end of the day, we have to also understand the other perspective and how some students might feel and how other people from different backgrounds than us, uh, might, might feel like this. When I was elected as the first Latino Student Body president, it meant a lot to a lot of students from my community. It sort of gave them a sense of representation in a time that feels difficult for many of us. I grew up in Mexico. I have to say, these times are difficult for me and are difficult for many because of the national rhetoric. And sometimes, you know, it, it can be difficult for a lot of people. So I think that, as you said, there are a lot of perspectives on campus and, and part of that empathy is understanding that people come from different perspectives and from different backgrounds. And their idea of how about this policy is looking and how they might affect each other will be different.
Thank you, trustee Alvarez. Trustee Mekans? Oh, I'm sorry, still open the floor. Anyone else have any comments?
Oh, I just would say,
Trustee White?
Yeah, thank you for letting us have this time. And, um, I think what we just all witnessed, as Malcolm said in his remarks last meeting, it's a productive tension. And, um, another thing we always talk about is being the oldest. As, um, Adolfo, you pointed out that John would point out a lot in his remarks. And Malcolm, you pointed out, being the oldest means being you're the first. And so I think we have an opportunity to, um, be a leader and continue to do what we're doing.
Thank you. Uh, you, you know, the, the intent of, of, of bringing these issues up was not to, again, have kind of a rah rah session or to be Pollyanna-ish about it. I do think that we have made some, um, some pretty serious reforms. And because of the platform that UNC has, I think that we have an opportunity to really show our leadership as an institution for other schools to follow. Um, and I, I think that we should, you know, I think we should be proud of, of a number of the things that we've done. Um, and I think we need to tell the, the story of, of some of the reforms that we have put in place. Um, as we go out to sell this institution to, again, the, the citizens of the state, we need to make sure that they trust this institution. And, and right now, especially after, um, what occurred in Utah a couple of weeks ago, there have been a lot of calls for people to basically abandon higher ed. And that would be a, that would be a, just a, I, I can't even put into words how big of a mistake that would be if that were to happen. And yet we're still hearing credible people make those types of, um, assertions on social media. And I, I think that, I know when I came on this board, one of the goals that I had was to try to, instead of abandon the institution, was to reform it so that we could help regain the trust and we could, as a society, move back towards finding that golden mean where everyone doesn't get everything that they want, but we all get something that we can hopefully live with. And that, that really was the, the goal. I mean, that was one of my big, my big goals coming on this board. Um, I like to think that in a lot of ways, we've been able to achieve that. And I think that it would be helpful for us to make sure that other people know that that has been our intent, that, and that that is what we have gone out and tried to, to do. Um, it's, it's hard to move an institution the size of, of UNC Chapel Hill. It's hard to move society. But if we can make some positive changes and if we can make, um, our citizenry, all of the citizenry feel, um, a level of confidence in, in what we're doing here, then I think we will be able to regain a lot of the trust in some of the quarters that we've, you know, where, where it's been lost. And so to, to Dean Stoyer, um, I'm hopeful that we can incorporate some of the, um, events that have occurred here on campus over the last couple of years and have that, um, become some part of a messaging strategy that we can all agree upon. I mean, again, this isn't, this isn't the, you know, the Dr. Jones Show. I mean, this is a, a message that everyone can, can consolidate around and that we can then take forward to, you know, the, the citizens of the state and, and to the nation. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll stop waxing philosophical and move on from there. Um, our last informational item is to hear an update from Michael Andreasen, Vice Chancellor for Development and Jeff Hill, Associate Vice Chancellor for Campaigns and Strategy. Mr. Andreas and Mr. Hill?
Committee Chair Jones and Board of Trustees members, good to see you this afternoon. Uh, Jeff Hill's not here, uh, so hopefully no tough questions are coming my way. Uh, Jeff is actually interviewing for one of our new senior development positions, uh, on a committee. He's not being interviewed, he is being the interviewee. Uh, and so, um, we'll proceed without him. This is the meeting where I get to recap the last year's totals. And so a little more detailed than I typically might do. Uh, but I'm just delighted to include you and, and inform you uh, as to the generosity of so many Tar Hells, uh, around the world, frankly, but certainly in the state of North Carolina and beyond that, uh, contribute to this great university. So I have a ton of slides and I'll sort of run through them. Uh, but please interrupt during and certainly we'll take questions after. So a year ago, I, uh, I, I showed a slide, uh, about the prior year. Uh, and, um, it was actually a $410 million slide, which was a significant decline from the previous year. Those are less fun slides to show. Um, delighted that today we report $471 million in total giving. That's not cash, of course, I'll show that in a minute, but that is a 15% increase over the previous year. Um, and the five-year average now reflects our new counting standard. And so we're actually about eight percent down, uh, from our five-year average. But that five-year average also includes our single biggest year, which was in fiscal '22, a, a, a near $800 million all year at the end of the campaign. So, um, while up from a year over prior, very happy. Uh, we have work to do to continue to sustain, uh, an even higher threshold of, of philanthropy for our university. We always show cash, though you'll see that number, of course. Um, that cash represents, uh, payments on previous commitments and outright gifts for the current year. So let's take a little look into the numbers of what we actually did last year. There is some good news and then there's some not so good news. Um, I'll start with the not so good news. We have a trend, uh, that many of us are worrying about and thinking about and trying to do something about. And that is an increasing decline or three-year decline, uh, in the number of gifts of $5 million and above. And we do not believe that reflects the, uh, capacity of our donors. We believe it reflects the lack of solicitation of gifts of that size. And so we're working hard and I'll make some comments later about how do we ensure that when we have donors with that capacity, we are fully engaging them in an inspired way to give fully. And so, um, 12 is the average, nine, six, but that's a trend we intend to reverse. And I can't wait to show you numbers next year that I think will reflect a real commitment to grow the number of donors who make gifts larger than $5 million. The good news, of course, is we had a bit of a dip last year and we had a really strong bounce back. Eighty individuals last year committed over between a million and 4.9 million totaling 136 of that total. Uh, a really intentional effort for us to grow that, that activity. I think these next two slides just highlight what I've showed you, so I'll move on past that. This is a, a reflection of that good and bad news. Um, we would expect, in fact, our objective is that 20% of our total should come from gifts above $5 million. And obviously, given that we're down, we're only at 9.7. Um, that doesn't mean we want to see fewer gifts at the million dollar level, uh, those 80, but we would like to see a growth at the higher level. We've had a discussion at this board meeting, uh, over my three years about the role of deferred gifts. And I think you've heard me say, there's no greater act of charity than to think about one's children, grandchildren, one's church and one university when, um, establishing estate plans. A general industry rule of thumb is about 20% of the total should be deferred because we wanna think about the tension between near-term needs and outright gifts versus, uh, gifts that come 30-plus years down the road. We're at 18% this year, so a little lower than our, uh, goal, uh, for a percentage standpoint, but thrilled that $83 million of future gifts have been documented and committed to by our donors. Another way we think about this work is how much of this work is expendable? Meaning we can use it as quickly as we get it? How much of its endowment? And I want to again commend John, uh, for his service to the university and, and the role of the Chapel Hill Management Company. Uh, those returns are phenomenal. And I think our donors have a sense of trust that if they make an endowment gift, they will be stewarded and they will be invested well. And so again, uh, we're just working on plans for our next campaign, but a general hope and sense is about a third of our total should be endowment. Two-thirds expendable, one-third endowment. We're at 28% for this past year of our total. I've also shared with you that we are a very large and historically decentralized, uh, development shop, uh, function. Twenty-six different units raising money. I'll talk a little about the realignment that we, uh, pursued and completed last year. Vice Chancellor Knuffin acknowledged that earlier. But I've also said that the four largest units on this campus carry about 65% of the total. And that is actually true, right to the note, I think, forty, forty-nine, forty, 64.9% this year. Um, we see that all of the units are up over private, uh, prior year. Um, I'll call it athletics, that exceeded its five-year, uh, average. Um, and, um, the other three have some work to do to get back to their full potential, but I think can show a strong bounce back from the previous year. But I also wanna highlight lots of other units that had a really strong year prior over prior. I'll acknowledge some of the, uh, units up at the top of that arrow are rather small. So if you have, say, $100,000 previous year and you come in much significantly higher, you see that percentages. But every one of these units raised more money in fiscal '25 than they did in fiscal '24. And so we just wanna acknowledge and celebrate that achievement. Now, how productive were we? You've heard us talk about new metrics. A year ago, July of 2024, we updated our expectations for fundraisers who do major gift work. And that's the, the majority of our frontline fundraisers, those that go out into the world and meet people and talk to them about giving those donor, those staff are really looking at gifts of 100,000. We saw a steady decline in previous years of activity, uh, around that. Last year, we increased our asks, that is a written formal proposal of 100,000 or more by 50%. And I'm really proud of that. And I'm confident it's because we told our staff, we're gonna measure actually the work you do in the space. Many of these wonderful colleagues raise gifts below $50,000, donors below $100,000. Donors might say, I'm not in a position now to do what you've asked, but I'm in a position to do something less. That's wonderful. But we are measuring year over year, individual fundraiser's activity at the 100,000 above level. And I'm confident that because we're measuring that, we saw this significant increase. This is a breakdown of, uh, what level of asks were made, uh, from, from those proposals. Well, we saw more gifts. Turns out, if you make more asks, you make more gifts, so up 41%. And we're quite confident that many of those gifts that have not yet been closed, either a yes or no, will be closed in the coming year. And so there'll be a lagging indicator of the good work that they're doing in that regard.
Mike, quick question. So do we have all the tools that we need and the data that we need to qualify? You know, potential donors so that we're, you know, pointing, you know, the proposals at the right folks?
It's one of the favorite questions the chancellor asks me in our weekly standing meeting. We, we have some tools. We have a very aging database that's just cumbersome. It's actually five years past its life cycle. Uh, we've bought some additional tools to layer on top, but we're looking seriously right now at some new AI tools that can go through quickly and look at a broader set of data that will more likely predict donors who will give at this level. Um, we, and as part of the campaign planning, and I, we reported that last year, we, we sent our entire database, over a million records out to publicly access, uh, accessible information. Nine thousand individuals came back that have, we believe have the capacity to give 100,000 that have never been engaged to do so. Now, we have a staff of about 160 doing this external work. How do you divide 9,000 into 160? AI, that's where we're trying to go next. It's a great question.
I'm sorry to ask you a second, but, and are, are, are our gift officers trained, you know, to know when liquidity events happen, you know, for potential donors that we're going after for these big numbers?
Not well enough.
Okay.
Uh, it's a major issue for us. Uh, I think what we've largely done, and it's not common at every institution, we sort of look inwardly. Do you come to things? Have you made a gift before? Where do you work? But we don't track those kinds of additional informations around what have you invested in? Have you had a liquidity event? What might be the tax implications of, of the moment you're in? And are we asking those questions? So we've actually engaged, uh, in a series of training sessions, uh, with our staff. I think we're making progress, but there's a lot more to be done there, I think. And a level of sophistication, and we talked a little bit about this during coffee, between an outright gift, a pledge, and an estate gift, and how they may all work in combination. We don't do a great job of that yet. And I like to think about it, what we call a, a multi-passed gift, that would be that way.
Can I?
Almost.
Okay.
Please.
What would be the amount, like ballpark of this, like if you wanted a new database, like what does that cost?
Uh, it's a big question. It's somewhere between 10 and 15 million dollars. And we actually are looking at, uh, financial models on how we can, um, support that acquisition. There's two things we need to think about. One is the timing of when you do it, because there's a ramp up period. And as you know, we gotta map all that data. Uh, and then depending on which system we might buy, there's, um, it's an interesting phenomenon going on. Through my entire career, there have been three major companies that provide data warehouses and platforms for higher education fundraising. And I've used two of the three in my career. But over the last five years, Salesforce is making great progress in moving into the higher education sector. And it's nimbleness and flexibility to plug into other kinds of resources, to do the kinds of AI and, and modeling that we wanna do is, is proving really compelling, but it's also proving pretty expensive. So that's, we're just looking at that right now.
Okay, you mentioned lack of solicitation, certainly in the $5 million and above. And on the one hand, I get that. I'm also, but I'm curious, like your level of conviction that that's the issue? Or to what degree are you comfortable with the level of cultivation? Uh, that precedes solicitation, um, could be one area. Articulation of need and impact and ideas versus write me a check. Um, I think those kinds of topics can be the harder ones than the ask. And so I'm not sure I'm ready to just say, okay, it's a solicitation problem. Regardless, it might be, but I'm not willing to just jump there when I think there's some really important things that it's an easier ask with cultivation, with articulation of need, translating need to impact. And so I'm just, I'm not ready to go just that we have a solicitation problem opportunity, but I'm just curious your thoughts.
You are spot on. I, I mean, um, I think there is some evidence that we are not willing to ask at, at, at capacity. But it's not- but it's not just the bravado of making an ask, to your point. Our consultants that are advising us in the campaign, that did a macro assessment for about eighteen months, which actually produced three recommendations. The first of which was the realignment that's been referenced, that we are so decentralized, that's hard to bring a standardization of effort. And let me be clear, realignment is not about, we're agnostic about where our unit fundraisers are raising, what they're raising money for. We looked at the deans and the provosts, and they've just gone through an incredible process of sort of a ten year visiting effort to establish priorities of fundraising for the next campaign. So what we're raising money for, that is an academic exercise. But how we do our work is an administrative exercise, and that's what the realignment is trying to get at. But we discovered a couple of things along the way. They made three recommendations. One is you're too decentralized, two, you're not doing enough at the bottom of the base. We've got to engage alumni in quality engagement, listening and finding ways to plug them in, better partnering with the Carolina alumni. And Veronica and I talk about this all the time. But then we're not asking at full capacity. We call that principal gifts. And so we've made some structural changes with our staff. We've just adopted a new strategy just this last month, where if you're a fundraiser and you have a relationship with someone we believe can give five million dollars, we're going to put a team around you to make sure that you're actually moving the conversation in that direction. Third thing I would say, well, maybe three and four. One, clearly our metrics in the past incentivize near term outcomes at the expense of long term. So you can give five million dollars, but I'll take the hundred thousand dollars to hit my annual goal. And so with the metrics we put in place, now look at three year models of not only how many visits, how many asks, and how many dollars do you raise? But how are we doing that work in a multi-year fashion? I think that's another reason we're seeing more solicitations go in that direction. The last point I make is you're exactly right. Do we have a compelling idea? Big gifts require big ideas. So how do we generate big ideas, ones that have real impact? We haven't figured that out at Carolina. There are pockets where we have, but I'd like to do that across the entire campus, and that's a big part of the next campaign. Sorry, you got me down a rabbit hole I love to talk about. Okay, so the other, the other point that we, to this nine thousand, again, this is, you know, only nine, only nine hundred and thirty five. We need to do a better job of looking to the next generation of donors. And this is a, we put a premium on fundraisers who do qualification. And what is a qualification? It's an, it's an actual face to face conversation with someone we believe through technology and the data analysis has the capacity. But can we confirm that in fact they have inclination and the capacity, maybe a liquidity event, that makes them ready for a conversation of a hundred, five hundred, a million or five? And so really pleased to see that that number way up. That will be the identification of the next generation of donors. So that just breaks out by, we've, you know, we've actually identified nine hundred and thirty five who we think can do a hundred thousand or more. We also rejected about five hundred folks who couldn't do that level but could do something less, and that's okay, too. We're grateful for their capacity.
Can I ask, on the five million plus gifts, I think, am I reading this correctly, on the new cash and commitments, there were six?
Six. And those are not all cash, those would be a mixture of cash and pledges and deferred.
Okay, and we don't have the number on just cash?
I don't, I can get that for you.
Okay, but of that, that number, how many were new donors?
I can also get that for you. I think most of our principal gifts at the moment are existing known donors, maybe not at that level. But it's, it's pretty uncommon for some to parachute in at five. Usually they've had some activity, but I'll, I'll confirm. Okay, I know I'm at time here, but just a few things. We talked a little about the structural changes we are working through, and I'm really pleased with that. We are facing some real hiring challenges, both in terms of the current environment of budget constraints, but frankly, just the industry. It is, continues to be a really competitive landscape for development professionals. Being in the triangle is incredible because we have these great universities that we can sometimes poach from, but it also means we can get poached as well. And so we monitor that quite a bit. The new funding metrics I mentioned, it's surprising to me, and we're having a specific focus on where the the stock market is at the moment, why we're not seeing more gifts of appreciated equities. It seems like an obvious opportunity for us to be much more aggressive and bullish in that regard. There are significant, and I'm not an expert, I'm not even going to try to do that. I'll look to Kelly, maybe she left, but the new big beautiful bill has some implications around tax deductibility of certain gifts, or we're bringing in a tax expert to kind of walk us through so we're better informed to talk to donors about them. And then we are seeing donors are getting interested in other things, and it's always a risk for us that they love their university, but they can be inspired to support other projects. I won't go through the, you use it in your book. We, we try to just benchmark where we are as an industry. This is the most recent data from USA Giving, and, you know, the high watermark there is, it actually coincides with our high watermark in the campaign. So it's not surprising that, not only in the post campaign, but in the, in the country, there was a bit of a dip, but we're seeing an increase back up in the last two years. And this is just benchmarked against S and P. And so what are we doing this year? I'll just quickly went through, we are continuing to work aggressively to plan for the next campaign. As I mentioned, we had an incredible year with our, our deans who've done an amazing job of visioning the future and putting to paper actual fundraising objectives. We're now working with the chancellor and his leadership team to begin to put in place fundraising ideas among the four task force that, that he's, the four focal areas that he's leading. And we need to think about, what does a gift for five hundred thousand dollars or fifty million mean to advance this university in the area of AI, for example? So we've got to work through that homework to do that, and then align the top down priorities with that twenty six foundational set of ideas. We're also thinking really holistically about volunteers. We have over, I stopped counting, we have over sixty volunteer boards on this campus, some of which are fundraising boards, some of which are fiduciary boards, some of which are industry engagement boards. And there's not a standard of how we engage those volunteers. And so our deans have actually asked us to work with our consultants to just think about, what does best practice look like? How do we make sure that when volunteers are here, whatever their assignment might be, does it advance the conversation around giving in an appropriate way? In terms of the pipeline, I mentioned the three year rolling major gift pipeline. This is something we're holding our fundraisers to account, including me, I have a portfolio. We don't want staff to wait a year to talk to someone if they think someone is a year away from giving. We want them to talk to them right now and keep talking to them until they are ready to give. And that's what this three year pipeline is about. And then I mentioned the nine thousand project. We're really excited about what this means for the future, but we need to figure out through technology, the most efficient way to crack that nut. And more important, we got to grow our staff. I mentioned the metrics. And I think this is the last principal gifts I've talked about. We've got to increase the number of gifts at the higher level around big ideas. I think this is the last one. So the consultant's conclusion, which again drove the realignment discussion, helping us think about the bottoming the base and focusing the top, is their assessment, looking at our database and our past history and our peer institutions, is that we're about a five hundred million dollar a year shop, again, not cash, all gifts, with a capacity to be an eight hundred million dollar a year shop. This next campaign is going to be about raising increased financial support around a set of priorities led by our deans, galvanized and put forward by our chancellor. Frankly, this board's support and encouragement, really important. But one objective is to now establish a new run rate of eight hundred million dollars a year at the end of a campaign and beyond. To, to, to make that happen, that three hundred million dollar growth is also going to require an investment. And I know you were talking earlier about endowment fees for development. One of the ways we're going to grow for the campaign is looking at the endowment fee. We're also going to be looking to a standard practice that other universities run a gift tax or a gift fee that happens at the transaction. We have not made that decision yet, but we're looking at all the various options that we can finance a growth in development across the campus to go from five hundred million dollar a year shop sustainably to an eight hundred million dollar shop. That's my report, and it was a lot happy to take any questions from you.
What's your database represent? Who's in the database?
All alumni, parents, any donors and friends that we've collected over the years. We also have about a million grateful patients that are under, a million grateful patients, but it's under very complex privacy. But that's really.
Just kind of on the same vein of, you know, what is a database cost, the investment piece? I'm assuming that a hundred and sixty individuals is not enough to go from five hundred to eight hundred? If money were no object, what, what would you suggest? And how much would make it give you a path to success?
It's a great question, and, and I'm not sure you've ever had a vice chancellor in development who said they have too much budget. So I'm, I'm aware that we just want more. But we are trying to be really disciplined about this. Just to put it in context, we're about four hundred and twenty people that work in the development related space across the entire campus. That includes UNC Health, athletics, all the colleges, central development. We're one third in the center and two thirds in the units. When we benchmark against the other ten publics, they're about fifty fifty. So we're a little smaller in the center, which means we have less services we can provide. That's one of the questions, should we grow the center and how would we grow the center? And simple, simple math, and this is the math we're doing right now. If we, it's about nine and a half to ten ROI. And I've shared that with the board, for every dollar we spend, we raise about nine to ten. Dollars cash, the ten is pledges deferred, and we went through that last year. So the simple math is, if you want to raise three hundred million dollars more, you're just saying, wait, you got to spend thirty across these twenty six units. So how do you do that in a disciplined way by not just dividing it by thirty or by twenty six? So that's the math we're doing right now. We're actually modeling what kinds of positions we need and at which unit that has potential capacity they're not reaching. We're doing that with all of our deans and all of their development officers right now to work through that. And then the question is, and what, how would you find that thirty million dollars? What mechanisms do you have to generate that revenue?
And that thirty million is, to your point, over central and all the other constituencies?
It'd be across the entire twenty six.
And you have control over just central?
Control is an interesting word.
Can, can guide how those individuals raise money?
So I would say generally, so the realignment now has a role for central development, U D O, to set expectations around activity across these, these units. That would include, when they spend money in the units, are they investing and, and spending it in a responsible way? But it wouldn't necessarily mean that we would have to approve every position they might hire. We might just say, is there a plan to hire three more people, pick a unit? What are they going to do? Does it meet and align with the demand or opportunity you have? Some units have a lot of potential to raise money and are sort of underperforming. Others are running at a pretty high efficiency rate, so how would we add that? Second question, the second point to, to your question. We have an almost non-existent industry relation and corporate relations office. We have one person in central and a few scattered. Chancellor and I have talked about this extensively. There's a huge opportunity for corporations to get involved with this university, either by giving or more likely by sourcing interns, investing in technology and partnerships. So we probably have to grow our industry relations team, that would probably be a central coordinating function. So these are the kinds of questions, and I have a pretty extensive deck. I'm happy to share it with you offline if you'd like to see that.
Thanks. And the final, and the inside the numbers slides, are all those numbers just for central development? Like the, how many gifts does everybody, so included?
I have two questions. One, are we ever reaching E D P N C people? Because they are the ones that bring in these big industries here to see how they can support us. From your department, are we reaching E D P N C? Say the chairman or the CEO or anybody there, which, you know, when big companies are coming this way, they might be in the mood to give because they are coming to a new area and we are the number one bubbling university. Are we doing that?
Not systematically or not aggressively.
Okay, E D P N C is a good place to start, sir. The other question I have for you is, I hear about these five million dollar people and, you know, five million plus people. But what are we doing for the smaller donations that we get? Because I believe that small droplets one day make big floods. So we have a lot of people, we need to, I didn't see that today. Maybe you are doing it, but I would like to hear that, you know, the smaller people, that how are we reaching them? So, because they all have a stake in this university. If you ask me, any citizen that is here in North Carolina has a stake in this university. And I have seen other universities sending mailers, even some of the richest ones, like Harvard is sending mail, because my daughter studied there, it is getting mail, you know, every other week for donations.
It's a, it's a great point, and so.
I just wanted to ask.
No, no, it's great. When I come back next time, I'll, I'll bring you an update on sort of the smaller level gifts. We have so many, which is really extraordinary.
Yeah.
I worry that we haven't embraced technology in a way to make them feel like we are personally engaging with them. Because we, we send them a thank you note and a receipt, of course, but we, we don't actually, because of the scale, I think we, I was talking to Jen earlier. I think we did seventy five thousand transactions last year, representing, I think, twenty five thousand individuals. But that's extraordinary, but they don't all feel as if we deeply care and appreciate, and we've got to find better ways to make sure. So I'll, I'll bring that to the next meeting, it's really important.
Thank you.
One way to do that is to show them what their money was used for. I mean, just going to drop it in the general fund budget and disappears. That, it's nice, they gave it to their university. If you told them, your hundred dollars paid for this. I mean, that's how you're going to get excitement and energy and continued giving.
It's a really great point, and actually, Dean Storey and I have been talking about, we tend to think about what's the messaging for the next campaign? The best messaging would be, what do we do with the resources in the last? So exactly what.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned big ideas for big donors, but little donors like big ideas, too.
You know, when we go to Food Lion to buy groceries, every time they say, do you want to donate five dollars or ten dollars or twenty dollars? You know, they ask. So I was thinking in that level, that every citizen here has a stake in this university, it is for their children. I mean, for our children, not theirs, but ours. So we need to reach them, sir. And these days of social media, it's very cost effective to reach them. That might come, bring in a lot of funds for our university. Just a thought. Thank you, sir.
I'm curious.
Sorry, and I think that it, it, there's also an opportunity to, going back to the student experience, to highlight what areas can donors support the student experience? And for example, the dean of students basically needs efforts right now, need a lot of development support. And so I think they know, a lot of alumni understand what the struggles of a student were when they came here. And it's a good opportunity to go do advertising and broaden our attention to say, hey, you experienced these problems where you were here, you experienced insecurity and how much we needed support for that. Why are you not the person that chips in and helps us do better for our current students? So just a thought.
That's great, and, and as you know, our, our spring GIVE UNC has really grown the number of first time donors by the two click on your phone. But how do we scale that even more than we've had? I think it's a real opportunity.
Curious, what percent of your major gifts are alums?
I don't know about last year's number, but overall, it's about seventy percent.
What's your reaction to that number? How do you feel about it?
I think it's an opportunity to get a lot more gifts from non-alums.
From where?
I think growth is going to be to have non-alums. I think parents is a, is a really missed opportunity for us. Our parents are dying to support this university. We have two councils, I've been talking to our new senior vice provost about this. We have to figure out how to coordinate that parent engagement. They're so proud for their kids to be here, got to tap that in a different way.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I was going. I think non-alums is an opportunity, I still know, like, how, how are we doing in that space?
And then there's the question around, you know, in the state of North Carolina, the great pride for our athletic programs, and a lot of fans are not alums, how do we tap that market? And maybe in support. And maybe in support of athletics, which would be just fine. We need to raise money there, but
It's oftentimes where it starts. I mean, I'm aware of two stories. One where a non-alum basically gave the gift that led to a football stadium. Non-alum, no connection. Another non-alum gave a gift that led to a new library on another campus. And so that's, you know, where I'm focused, to be a point.
In some ways, we're so lucky that we have such loyal alums. And we're sort of rarefied institutions that have that kind of generosity. But it's also sometimes can be a barrier to not think beyond that. So it's a great point.
Thank you very much for the presentation today. And with that, Trustee Ballantyne, I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the external relations committee go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 31811A1, to prevent the disclosure of privilege or confidential information. And also pursuant to Section 143, 31811A2.
May I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're in closed session. Thank you.
And welcome to the September meeting of the University of Affairs Committee. As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflicts of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. I'll ask Chris McClure to please call the roll.
Chair Lloyd.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Mr. Alvarez.
Mr. Ballantyne. Mr. Blaine. Mr. Codis. Here. Mr. Pryor.
Here.
Mr. Turner. Mrs. White. Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to review and approve the open and closed session minutes of the July 30, 2025 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the open and closed session minutes? Second, any discussion or debate? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Our next item of business is to review and approve the annual institutional faculty workload report for 2024 to 25. Dr. Gisele Corby, Senior Vice Provost for Faculty Affairs and Keenan Distinguished Professor is here to present this item. Dr. Corby, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Lloyd. Let's see, break, we've done that. Uh, thank you so much for, for your attention to this matter. So this is our inaugural report to fulfill UNC System Policy 400.3.4. Um, and so I'm going to just give you a little bit of background because while I've been thinking about this report, I imagine that you all have not been. Uh, so as I mentioned, this is our inaugural faculty workload annual report. This policy is our, is our compliance with the UNC System Policy on faculty workload. It describes UNC Chapel Hill's implementation of that policy and the development of our own policy in compliance with the regulations. So in the report, which is pretty robust, you will see an analysis of our 2024 to 2025. So this is the culmination of this last year's, um, report. This, it looks at the distribution of faculty efforts in relation to the work plans. It also includes three required metrics, system required metrics for institutional productivity and additional measures that we felt were important to really describe the contributions of our faculty in supporting teaching, research, and service missions. So in terms of our timelines for the system office requirements, back in June of last year, this body approved, um, our institutional policy. And then we worked with each unit to develop unit level policies around faculty workload. All of these policies are publicly available on our institutional websites. In January of this year, um, we had a deadline for each faculty member who is required to have a work plan. And I'll talk a little bit about that eligibility. She'll have an approved work plan in place. And then, um, the, and we reported that to the system office and we're here now. And this meeting, you, um, last, in the last meeting, you got an outline of this workload, um, report. And now by the end of this month, we'll be asking for your approval of this, um, workload report and annually thereafter. By October 15th of this year, we're expected to submit our annual report to the UNC System President and annually thereafter, and then the cycle starts again. In January 26, um, we'll report to the board, they will report to the Board of Governors, this, um, annual workload, um, report. And my understanding, it'll be an aggregate across the system. The report is 53 pages. I'm only going to give you a couple of highlights and I'm happy to answer any questions. As you well know, Carolina's faculty are not simply instructors or that, that is part of the reason that we're here. We mentor, innovate, and serve communities and deliver care to the people of this state. Our workload, um, the workload reporting captures the breadth of these contributions. The faculty body is large, over 4,000 faculty total, um, across 15 professional schools and colleges. And nearly every faculty member submitted that was required to submit a work plan, um, submitted that. So we had 3,027 faculty that were considered eligible under this policy. That were, the requirements were that they were permanent faculty, tenure, tenure track or fixed term, and employed at the university for more than one year. 290, 200, 2,997 faculty, um, submitted work plans. The 30 faculty that didn't, um, were typically due to parental or medical leave. So we had 99% compliance and 32 of these, um, researchers were amongst the most highly cited, um, researchers in our nation. This snapshot gives you a little glimpse into this report. Across the university, our faculty balance their time across our three-part mission, teaching, research, and service, with an additional category that we advocated for, for our campus of clinical care. Because a large part of our faculty are based in either the med, School of Medicine or in the School of Dentistry and provide that clinical care. On the left side, you'll see non-clinical schools and on the right side, the aggregate of the, of medicine and dentistry faculty. At first glance, the report might suggest that our faculty actually, um, have relatively low averages for teaching. But when you look more closely at non-clinical faculty, they spend nearly half of their workload on teaching. The lower average, um, as I mentioned, might seem to be in the School of Medicine and Dentistry. But the reality is many of the faculty, while the, during the course of the provision of clinical care, are teaching and also conducting research. It's difficult to disaggregate that. And we've been working with the School of Medicine and the School of Dentistry on how to ensure that these data actually more accurately represent what they are doing. These are the three required elements of the workload, um, policy, course sections, student credit hours, and contact hours. And here you see our faculty deliver nearly a million credit hours. And that's really just the classroom time. This doesn't capture the time spent mentoring undergraduates in research or creative work, advising graduate students or doctoral candidates, preparing materials, grading, developing a new course, or supervising labs. And every student, every program benefits from faculty instruction. Beyond the numbers, um, certain schools look different depending on the school. We have high workloads in journalism and education, which are primarily teaching intensive. And as already mentioned, in medicine and dentistry, they, we blend, um, teaching with clinical care. When we talk about workload, however, we're not just talking about the percentages on the chart. Faculty are fueling, um, a $1.5 billion in research that strengthens our economy, training every local government in the state, delivering critical healthcare to North Carolinians and enriching communities through the arts. The return on the workload is felt in every corner of North Carolina and across the globe. This image from the Tar Heel bus tour captures what this report really can't show in numbers alone, that our faculty are out in North Carolina communities, listening, learning, and bringing their expertise to local challenges. In addition to accountability, um, where it's that we're also looking in the Office of Faculty Affairs as an opportunity for continuous improvement and ensuring, um, and using these data to, um, ensure that we provide an environment where faculty can thrive. So the report, the policy will be reviewed again in 2026. We'll have a comprehensive evaluation of current workload policies based on the collected data. We'll think about ways to integrate the lessons learned to strengthen faculty support frameworks. We'll be refining collection methodologies. This happened very quickly and, um, with changing deadlines and without systems in place to really support the data collection. So we're going to continue to refine the data collection methods for greater precision and actionability, using tools like InterFolio, which we've just rolled out as, um, a sort of a, a whole faculty management system. We'll also be looking at ways to expand the metrics that we report to the system office to continue to fully capture, um, the scope of faculty contributions. And then leveraging these workload strategies to optimize faculty support services and informing evidence-based decisions on staffing, infrastructure, and professional development. And ultimately, looking at ways that we can make strategic investments that directly enhance student learning experiences. I, this is at the end of my comments. I want to acknowledge that this is, I stand here representing an entire system, set of systems that came together to do this. My colleagues in Office of Faculty Affairs, Office of Institutional Research and Assessment, our HR information systems, as well as additional contributions all across our campus. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Other questions?
So thank you for the report. I guess, having looked at all of that and read through the report, are there any lessons learned? Or what sort of reforms need to be made based on the information you gathered? Or who were the top and bottom performers? Just trying to understand the actionable.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Trustee Codis. And this is something that I've been thinking about. Also, it, it's clear with enrollment growth, with the, um, fraction of teaching that's happening in a, in the diversity of settings, that we are going to need to find ways to continue to support our faculty and ensure that their pedagogical skills and expertise ma- matches the scholarly expertise that they bring to our campus. And so we've been thinking about that. I've actually asked our teaching and learning team to really start to think about what is it that we need to do, particularly in the setting of enrollment growth to support our faculty so that they are then supporting our students.
Thank you for this. I think we've seen our relative performances. Let's just say, how, how are we doing versus, uh, other schools in the system? I'll keep my editorial comments about the relative performance to myself.
Well, which, what, which performance measure would you like?
I, I suspect that, uh, there will be a lot of focus on the amount of workload at each university and each college and the university system that is focused on actually teaching classes. And I saw we were around 45%, I think. Do you have any idea where the rest of the systems for, uh, teaching load will be?
I don't yet have that information. I anticipate that our teaching, um, the proportion of, of faculty time, the teaching is going to be lower. Because our, but our, um, what we were told is that we have to get to 100%, right? 100% is one person's FTE.
Right.
Um, when we factor in the amount of research that's happening on our campus, there's no, we would be over that 100% when we look at number of hours. So I anticipate that our teaching workload will be lower on average. But it also doesn't describe the diversity of job roles that people have. We know that there are some faculty that's 100% of what they do is teaching.
Well, as you know, I'm a homeworker Carolina and I will, I, I agree with that. I do think you really, and Chancellor, you really need to be thinking through how to deal with the forthcoming accusation that our faculty is not, uh, appropriately focused on teaching our students relative to the faculty across the system. And I think we need a really good explanation for that, that, you know, defends the integrity of the institution and the division of labor that we have. Because I would anticipate, based on things that I've heard so far, that that is incoming and will be the latest, uh, bludgeon, uh, delivered to us in terms of whether or not we are operating efficiently. Thank you. Similarly, in the same vein, I, I read here that our service is so great, we can't even explain it. I think we need to explain it. And I think you can teach outside of the classroom and, and some of this service can maybe be recategorized to teaching. The couple of examples you did give about, you know, having speakers and concerts and exhibits and films. I mean, I don't know why you can't categorize that as teaching.
Excellent point. Thank you.
I don't know if this is necessarily for you, but in this, so what are we approving? And I'm not being funny, are we approving that the process was followed? I mean, or are we proving that the revised policy?
Okay. And the report.
That, that the contents of the report are true? My agenda says that we're approving the revised policy. I'm not disputing that they aren't, I'm just undershaping them.
I mean, I, I just read the system policy and it looks to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're not approving the policy, but we are approving the report that is compliant with the, with the policy that y'all have completed.
I, yeah, I think Trustee Blaine laid it out well, approving the report that's in compliance with the policy.
Noted on one of the pages that, um, 97.7% of the undergraduates go on shortly after to either have a job or, um, pursue higher ed. What do the other 2.3% do?
I'd have to get back to you on that.
And then second question, on the faculty contact hours, when they're greater than the student credit hours, I understood that to be maybe some of the creative elements, but it also included, uh, Germanic Slavic studies as well. Is that an indication of kind of lower enrollment programs perhaps, or lower, smaller class size?
So when this, the contact hours are greater than the credit hours, is that what you're asking? Typically, that has to do with course prep as well, um, because that's part of the system office's definition of contact hours outside of the classroom. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, if I were adding anything to the report or follow up to it, I would say, here's what we learned and here's what action we're going to take based on it. Because a report, just to have a report, doesn't really mean anything unless we're saying, here's what we're going to do specifically.
I would absolutely agree on that.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the report?
No move.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item of business, thank you, Dr. Corby. Our next item of business is to review and approve for request for reclassification of centers. Enter our Executive Vice Chancellor and Provost, James Dean, is here to present this item. Provost Dean.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, as you know, this is a request for decommission of, of four centers. I think all of us involved with this would agree that reclassification would probably be a better word than decommission because the centers are very much still going to be existing largely in their current form. But it turns out that decommission is the policy language that we are dealing with. So that's why we're using a word like that. In all cases, when, if you were to approve this, uh, the centers would continue to exist. They would continue to fulfill their mission. There would be literally no changes in their activities whatsoever. But the system policy on centers has some very bright lines about what constitutes a so-called BC, Big C center or not. And three out of the four of these, the reason why they need to be reclassified or decommissioned is because they take place in a single department. So the idea of a center is that it's inherently sort of interdisciplinary, cross-disciplinary, and so on. And so three of the, uh, three of these centers run afoul in some sense of those. Uh, the other one, the Carolina Center for Jewish Studies, the reason that that one does not fit the definition of a center is because it offers degrees. And centers by the logic of the, uh, policy regulations are not allowed to offer degrees. So this is a largely a technical matter of maintaining compliance with the system policy about centers and institutes. I think it's important to say that the people associated with these centers all support these changes. So it's not like we're doing something to them. This is something that, that they support. The deans and advisory board of, for example, the Carolina Center for Jewish Studies are in favor of this. And in the case of the Par Center of Ethics, uh, Gary Por, Gary Parr, who is, you won't be surprised to hear is the person behind this, is fully in support of it. So I don't want to minimize this too much. Of course, we're making a change here in accordance with the policy. I think this may be a case where it's a little bit less than meets the eye in terms of the substance of it. But with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Other questions?
Yes, ma'am. Provost, how much state money supports these centers presently?
I didn't come prepared with all of that information.
Okay.
Uh, we can get it to you certainly.
Uh, I only raised the question, um, because there was a line item in one of the legislative budgets that required a, um, reduction in funding to centers and institutes across the UNC system. Obviously, over half of those, well, half of those funds are on our campus. And I was curious if by decommissioning these centers, if they had a substantial amount of funding associated with them. I assume not, because they seem relatively small.
Right.
That would put a larger burden on the other centers on campus if, uh, if that budget provision were to become law.
Yeah, I can certainly.
And I guess that's more of a comment than a question.
Sure. I, I will say that we have a team of people working across the university now on the mandate to try and reduce the funding for the centers. And we'll have a report for you. That's actually one of the line items on Vice Chancellor Knopf's presentation from earlier. So we're engaged in doing that now.
Other questions? Is there a motion to approve the request for decommission?
So move.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have four significant items left to discuss, as well as some items in closed session. We've got about 40 minutes until we're supposed to break. And I'm a stickler for timeliness. So if you look over the various issues that are left and decide where you want to focus your time, that would be great. The next item is a presentation on student success, um, from James Orr, Senior Vice Provost for Undergraduate Student Success. Welcome, Dr. Orr.
Thank you so much for having me and thank you, members of the board. I do know that time is short, so I'll try to be very quick and, and save you some time. Today, what I want to do is to introduce myself, talk about some of the things that I've been looking at. But before I do that, I, I do want to, uh, thank the Chancellor for his, his vision, for having a coordinated strategic approach to how we think about the student experience. And I sat in on some of the earlier conversations and I do appreciate the wisdom of this board as you talked about the importance of capturing the student experiences and surveying students to understand how they think about the residence halls and their experience here at Carolina. I do want to let you know that we do have that survey data. We've, uh, made some notes and we'll be able to share with you at some point. But that is something that Carolina regularly looks at and analyzes. So a little bit about my background, uh, I have two decades of experience in higher education. What makes me a little bit different from most folks who do this type of work is that my experiences span across academic affairs, student affairs, enrollment management, student success. And so what I've been able to do is to look at those various pieces that impact the student experience to make significant, uh, changes in support of students. I'm a first-generation college student. I deeply believe in the power of education. I can remember growing up, my, my mom, every morning she would get up and I would hear her praying about, um, ensuring that her children got a chance to get an education, but that those who were responsible for making decisions on their education, that they would have the wisdom that they needed to be able to do that. So the power of education really resonates with me and is core to who I am. Uh, I've been very successful at leading strategic change at very large, complex organizations and identifying ways that we can leverage data to support students and enhance the student experience before they even knew that they needed that support. I joined Carolina on July the, the 15th. I, um, I've been counting days, as Dean's story has been as, as well. I'm a little bit behind him. But during that time, I've been doing deep listening and learning to learn about the culture of the institution and speaking to as many stakeholders as possible. Uh, so I'm excited for our conversation so that I can learn and hear from you. One of the things that I've immediately established is a student success executive committee. And what that committee does, it has all of the vice provosts and vice chancellors and other executive administrators who are looking at student success and the student experience. This is the first time that Carolina has had a group that's meeting weekly at that level across divisional lines to say, how do we support students and how do we improve and enhance the student experience? Here's what I've learned, that this is an outstanding institution that is absolutely critical to the state of North Carolina. And the staff who serve the institution are absolutely committed to and deeply, and deeply enjoy the work of supporting students, but also supporting the state of North Carolina. We've been very successful at supporting students. Uh, but one of the things that brought me here after being at, uh, one of the largest, most complex institutions in, in the United States is the vision that the Chancellor is bringing, that we can be nimble, we can be responsive, and we can achieve even greater heights. So what you'll hear me do is talk about some of the things that I've observed because we're great. We do an amazing job at supporting students. But I do think that, um, higher ed is going through a transformation and we do have opportunities in which we can better serve students. We can better serve the state of North Carolina. I love the conversation that you had about the experience that students have. Because in higher education, there are some things that are happening that impact the student experience. And I want to talk about those very briefly. Across the country, if you look at enrollment data, almost all institutions are seeing increases in the number of applications. That kind of flies in the face of, of what we hear about the demographic cliff. But I want to talk about that a little bit more. What we know is that not only is there this projected demographic cliff that's occurring, that's not impacting all states, it's not impacting Carolina. But two years ago, 8.3 million students and families applied to college. They were accepted to college and they chose not to go anywhere. So what does that mean? That means that we are in one of the most competitive enrollment environments that's existed. Because what you find is large institutions with huge brands are now recruiting in very sophisticated ways across state borders because their states have declining populations. And they have also declining college going rates. So that means that in the future, that institutions who continue to improve and continue to have the strong reputation, the rankings amongst students, have to be really laser-focused on the student experience. And has to be laser-focused on answering these three questions that parents and families are asking. Number one, if I attend your institution, what will the outcome be? How will that look like in terms of careers or going to graduate school? What are the outcomes? What is this institution's affordability and return on investment if I attend your institution? We do an amazing job at that. And then the third question that they ask are what experiences will students have, both inside and outside of the classroom? So if you think about student success, that means that in today's world, student success is really about supporting the whole student from their mental health, their academics, finances, how they transition through degrees, and then do they feel this sense of belonging? And we also know that promoting student success is also about how we engage parents to be active, whether that's through giving, whether that's through supporting programs, or whether that's through providing them with information about the initiatives that the institution is working on and ways that we're supporting their, their students. It's really a holistic approach. So the work that I've started doing is thinking about how do we take organizations within the university that are highly decentralized and say, how do we, one, think about student success throughout the live stream? So the learning that happens in the classroom, you made a great point. the learning that happens in the classroom, you made a great point, and the learning that happens outside of the classroom. And then we're also thinking, how do we take the data that exists? There's a host of data that exists that oftentimes people don't know exist. And how do we take this data and we use it in a, and we use it in very actionable ways to enhance the student total experience? And then finally, Carolina is a very large, complex place. And what we know is that as students and families navigate this large, complex institution, we have to make it as easy as possible for them so that they have the best possible experience. While I'm exploring these, these questions, there are some initiatives that we've started doing right away. And some of them started before I got here and others are, we're just now kicking off, but I want to talk to you about. And the first is that we know that when you look at the components of student success, there are three major components. One is enrollment. So how do we engage students and families before they even know that they're, that they are going to apply to the institution or before they're even thinking about the institution? You see, because what we want is that every student, every prospective student, and really every North Carolinian to know that this is a place for them. So how we engage in enrollment management is absolutely critical. The second piece is how we think about learning that happens both inside and outside of the classroom. And then the third piece is the work that happens in student life, ensuring that students have this amazing experience that's consistent with who we are as an institution. There is a host of offices and people around campus that do this work to create a coordinated effort and coordinated engagement to really promote student success. I'm going to talk about a few of those initiatives that are happening right now, and then I'll end with ways that I'm thinking about a vision in the future. So, um, one of the things when I, when I first got here, it's, well, it's actually a funny story. Before I got here, I was watching a board meeting when I was still in Columbus. And I heard you all rightfully address and express concerns about the experience that students had registering for classes. So you, 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 I think you were the one. Yep, yep. You, you had, you had good comments about that. And so I want you to know that because of your wisdom about a year ago, you approved funding for a project called High Point. We've reconned that project called Carolina, that's called Student First. And what that does is this new technology that is well underway, we're piloting it right now. The Student Government Association has been engaged in providing feedback. It's going to provide a transformative experience for how students are able to register for courses, plan their degree, and also use real-time data for our academic advisors as they're trying to help students reduce the time to their degree. If we had more time, I would spend a lot more time on this particular slide, but what I do want to say is that, um, is the, you know, the technology is mobile friendly. Uh, it's a centralized application where students can go in and see the information that they need. And I really appreciate you all for having the wisdom and, and vision to ask these questions, but also to support the funding that's going to make this just transformation for our students. The second piece that I'm thinking a lot about is how do we onboard students and families to the institution? And when I say onboarding, it's from the time that a parent or a family member visits the institution. We are one of the top institutions in, in, in the nation. And we plan to be the number one public institution in the nation. Well, what we want is that when our students and families visit the institution, we want them to have an experience, a campus visit experience that's absolutely outstanding. So what we're doing is really thinking through a curriculum approach to how we onboard students and families. So here's what that means. Number one, we know that, as I said earlier, there's an increase in applications happening across the country. Across the country, parents and families, they're applying to more and more institutions. So what does that mean? That means that the campus visit is absolutely critical to gaining the momentum to yield the best and the brightest students. And not just the in-person campus visit, but the virtual campus visit. If you look at recent data, what we find is that more and more students and families, they're going on the website and they're doing a virtual tour before they even decide what institution they'd like to enroll in. That's what our best and brightest students are doing. And so we're looking at an approach that looks at what's the right information that we should have in our virtual tours? How do we ensure that if you come to visit campus, there is a high-impact experience that represents the institution who, that, that we are? And then what information should be, um, covered during orientation? And then what information should be covered during a student's first semester with us? We're excited about the amazing work that's happening in our College Thriving course, which really gives students the tools, the skills and the abilities to study better, to learn the campus better, and really deploy strategies that we found to be helpful in helping students be successful. We are taking a close look at that, at, at our College Thriving course, I will say, to say, how do we connect that throughout the entire onboarding process for our students and our families? Really excited about what we call the, the Carolina Advantage. What we know is that our students who are with us today, when they graduate in their second, their third, their fourth job in their working career, they're going to be working in a world that literally does not exist today. So that means that learning for those students is about not just how do I do the work, but it's about asking critical questions and being able to look into the future and to develop the solutions for the problems and the opportunities that will exist in a time that does not exist today. So we're doing a lot of great work around career and connecting leadership development, student financial wellbeing, advising and alumni networks in really focused ways so that as our students are here, we can ensure that they're gaining the knowledge, skills and abilities that'll help them have a, a major impact when they leave the institution. So where are we going? And I've, and if I ask me questions, uh, anytime, uh, I'm intentionally going quickly to, to buy you some extra time. But so what's next? Some of the things that I'm doing now is continuing to evaluate the best way for all the people, groups and areas that are supporting student success to really work, work closer together so we can fill some gaps. We're thinking about unifying our approaches to student success across the entire campus. Earlier, Mike talked about how we have two parent boards that do amazing work. What we're thinking about, how can we help these two parent boards work closer together and be more coordinated? Because it will, so it will help us as we try to support our, uh, giving, giving goals, but also help us support our students. We're looking at how we leverage data and analytics to really provide support for students before they even know that they need that support. One of the things that I talked about, um, a lot in my previous role was this idea of strategic nudges. So I love candy bars. Love them, right? And so, but I've been trying to eat better. And so I'll go through the store, you know, and you go through the store. Um, see Snickers, Snickers is, yeah, yeah. I love, and Kit Kat bars are really good too. So tho- those are the two. But I'll go through the store and what will happen is, is that I won't get any candy bars. I'll have everything that's healthy. But once you get to the checkout line, on the end cap in front of the counter, they have candy bars and I'll throw three or four ins- into, inside the basket. Those are called strategic nudges. And what the research has shown us is that we can help students be very successful and move the needle in ways that we may not think we can move the needle when you use strategic nudges to encourage students to take actions that we know will support their success. For example, if students have the option of taking out a loan, we, we're required by the federal government to present all the loan options that they have available to them. But a strategic nudge will say, here are the three loan options that you have. Ninety percent of our students and families who are in your situation, here's what they do. And what you're doing is you're nudging students and families to take decisions and actions that will support their overall success. So we'll be taking a closer look at how we use and deploy data across our student success enterprise. And then the final piece, which I think is absolutely critical, is the no wrong door approach. So rethinking how we amplify resources to break down barriers and silos for our students. I'm a firm believer that if you're a student and you go to an office and you have, and you have a question, that the people that you reach out to should be able to look across the data across the enterprise and answer the question that you have and also answer other questions that you have without having to send you to multiple offices. So we'll be thinking very deeply about how do we decrease the number of dead ends that our students run into when they, when they have questions or when they are interacting with the university. So I'm really excited to, to be here, um, excited about the, the, the great work. Um, Carolina is such a great institution and just excited to be able to support our efforts and support our students. And I really appreciated the wisdom that you had and the insight that you had with asking questions about the student experience and making sure that it was on everyone's radar, that we have to, we have to invest in the student experience.
Thank you, Dr. Orr. Other questions? Trustee Blaine?
Uh, Dr. Orr, uh, I know we're in a hurry, so you can get back to me on some of these. Do you, do you have any students on your committee on student success?
So the students, we have two groups. The student success executive group is, um, really, um, the administrative functions of the institution, but we do have multiple student.
Since we're in a hurry.
Okay.
It is insane to have a group on student success that is filled up only with administrators. That is not a pathway, in my opinion, to getting a program where you get student success. You need to talk to students. I've got a bunch of other, uh, other thoughts. I mean, going back to slide seven in here, I sure hope that these six student success priorities are only proportional in this circle and not in real life, because academics need to be first. In my, in my business, we talk, I talk a lot to my clients about a problem, a word I invented, it's called Scopus. And it's where you get a whole lot of really smart people together and they take on stuff and they have way too much scope and not nearly enough focus. Um, and this to me looks like a Scopus problem waiting to happen. The things that I want to know about, again, we don't need answers today, how are we going to have the best campus visit in person in the country? We've been talking about this since I've gotten on the board, people before me. Our campus visit is not up to SEC standards, so I would just leave it at that. I, if I were you, I'd get a bunch of students, I'd go to SEC schools and I'd copy what they're doing because, you know.
So if I can, if I can answer, because those are really great, because that's part of the onboarding group. And one of the things, because we were going quickly, there is a student advisory group where students are on the administrative groups. Adolfo, he'll, he knows that and, and several others. But this was a separate administrative group. Carolina has been having students involved in these administrative.
Which one of the groups is going to be the decision-making group?
Well, I think.
Is that going to be the administrators' group, not the student group?
So.
I mean, I'm not trying to be.
No, 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 that's such a.
And we can talk, like, we can talk about some of this stuff later, but these are problems. You have, uh, trustee Lloyd talked about facilities and all these things. If we want to be number one, these are the things we have got to tackle. And the things that we've heard about for years and, and some of us for years and years and years and years and years, some of us for years and years. But we just, we, we gotta get after this stuff and like more committees, like, I just want to know how we're going to get the best campus visit. I want to know how you decide what classes you're going to offer students, because I hear over and over again, it's not just our registration system is terrible and not helpful to students. And granted, that's registrars often, I mean, not your thing. It's that the classes that are offered are not what they want to take. And I want to know how we're going to address that. A problem that I heard about repeatedly this year, and again, I'm just putting this out there for you, is freshmen who came on campus and ended up having to register before they saw an academic advisor.
Yeah.
I mean, that to me is just utterly unacceptable. I mean, I have parents calling me like, what, what are we all doing? It's like, my, my daughter had to register, she hasn't even seen an advisor.
Yeah.
I mean, these are just things to me, like, I'm glad you're here. I want to impress upon you that we have failed and failed and failed and fallen on our face and failed some more on fixing this stuff. And I feel like a lot of it is because administrators talk to administrators and do what's good for administrators. I feel like you've got to go talk to students and not just highly involve students like, uh, the student body president. You need to go grab some students that don't want to engage on this and say, hey, what do we do to improve your situation on campus? I'm glad you're here. This is a big problem. I would tell you, don't focus on fifty million things, like whether, all, you know, focus on getting these kids the right academics, the right financial situations, so they don't put themselves in debt. And I think if you do that, a lot of the other stuff takes care of itself. Don't focus on the ancillary stuff, is my advice. And like, be aggressive. We will have your back, Dr. Orr. I mean, get after it. You're the man.
Thank you. And thank you for that feedback and love to connect one-on-one and, and hear more. Really appreciate that wisdom. You got me the Rockies. Well, I love that.
Again, going to be fast. Thank you. Excited you're here. And I'll just add on to everything that Blaine said. Orientation, my understanding is it's not required? It is required. It is. Okay. And then is it included in tuition? I think we should think about that, because my understanding is it's an extra fee.
It is.
Okay, that's good. And then.
An extra fee. It's not included in tuition. It's an extra fee.
Think about that. And then also, um, on the executive committee that is hopeful to have students, is there anyone from UNC Police or Public Safety?
That's a very good idea. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. That's great.
Other questions, comments?
Trustee. Can I?
Sure.
I need to, because he's also put his light on. You go first.
You go. He defers to his elders.
No, I am younger than you, so why don't you go first?
I want to, uh, say welcome here, uh, and I appreciate your enthusiasm. And sort of in keeping with what trustee Blaine said, I think you need to, uh, to have a cold, hard, critical look at all of this.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, so often, you know, the attitude is, oh, we're great at this, we're great at that.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, we ain't as great at it as we would like to be. So to that end, I have a focus group, like the one that Jim was just talking, a student here who would be a sophomore. She will remain nameless, but I texted her real quick, real quick. Do you and your friends like College Thriving?
I, hey, I tried.
Let me finish. It's so stupid. Why? Waste of time. All those stupid modules. We learned how to make friends. Is it like triple I, which was something that precedes you called Ideas, Information and Inquiry? And I have yet to ask a student whether or not they liked it. Unanimous. They, they think it's ridiculous. So I then say, is it like triple I? My focus group responds, I had to write a reflection on the old well last year. Triple I is worse. But College Thriving is bad too. Student hours would be better spent in a class they want to take or have to take as a prerequisite. Like if they're planning to the business school, the husband school. So just take that with a grain of salt. Thanks.
No, that's, that's really helpful. I appreciate that.
Doctor, thanks for your great presentation. I appreciate that. But what I see is a lot of fluffing here. The, the main purpose of our college is education. And we need to concentrate on education and what is happening out in the real world. So our education should be tailored so that when these students come out, there are corporations willing to take them right away. So what is the cost factor in all this? When we have to have, like you said, your mother said that God help my child to get the right education. I don't know whether we are missing that point here, because some of you should travel to other countries and see how they are developing their students. Vis a vis India, China, these people are putting in a lot for education. And we, when we look at this, I feel lost in this issue, because are we forgetting the main focus like trustee Jim Blaine said?
Yeah.
And the rest of them here. The main focus should be education.
Yeah.
And that will make us, make our children ready for the outside world. That is all I have to say.
That's it. That's, that's so wise. And, and what, what I'll say is that, um, the comments that you've made are, are really appropriate. That Carolina is a large, complex organization and part of the work that I'll be doing is to say, how do we create these synergies? So that we really can focus in on those things in very, very coordinated ways as our students are navigating the institution.
Other questions or comments?
Just quickly welcome, uh, Dr. Orr.
Just quickly welcome, uh, Dr. Orr. I've gotten the chance to meet with Dr. Orr a couple of times. I think that he is really willing to listen. He's willing to learn. For example, the first time we met in person, he was undercover on a campus tour because he had heard about the campus tours. Um, my best friend, when she toured campus, her campus tour guy told her, only one of you will get into this university. And so everybody started like looking at each other like, oh, wow. So like, why do I even apply to this school if you're already telling me I'm not going to get in? But I think that he, he's taken time to understand the big structure of the university. And we're looking forward to working on the student government side to, um, increase student input. I cannot emphasize enough how much student input is important. The same conversation I have had with Nate about service first, we need to have student input and service first. As we make decisions of barber cutting the budget, we need students in those rooms. Because there's a perspective that at the end of the day, sometimes administrators can't understand from students who live in dorms, who take classes, who walk around campus and experience the everyday thing. So we appreciate you. We'll be in touch about student involvement.
Thank you all. I really appreciate.
Thanks very much. It sounds like across the board, what the board is asking of all of our speakers in this committee and others is to bring us your pain points and a thoughtful analysis truly of the challenges that you're facing. And then let this board be a place where we can talk about solutions and hold each other accountable for progress towards actionable uh, change. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So we still have tenure and campus security left to discuss. And, uh, Chris McClure says that we can take a bit more time, so we're going to extend at least until 5:15 to give proper time to tenure and campus security. And let's now hear from Provost Dean for his report on tenure.
Thank you so much. Uh, the good news is that there's not a report. The, uh, the, yes, it's in, it's in your materials that the, uh, report that, uh, that was sent is in, in your materials. Uh, and the background of this is that we had a very productive conversation a couple of months ago. And there were a number of remaining questions that you raised either in that meeting or after that meeting. And the report that's in your materials was intended to try and address as many of those questions as possible. I'm, I'm pretty sure this is, and I verified this with, uh, trustee Cottis the other day. I'm pretty sure this is the most detailed information about tenure that's ever been provided to you. So, and I hope you find it helpful. We addressed a number of really specific questions, so I'll just give a sort of a one-minute summary here. Uh, why did some people not have their tenure decided one way or the other at eight years? They had extensions based on, uh, family situation, health situations, or in some situations, COVID. There's an analysis in there about tenure at the time of hiring that you asked about. And, uh, there's some answers about why that happens. It's relatively infrequent. Uh, sometimes it's to hire someone who's a senior administrator. The Johns Hopkins, uh, exception was one of the things that's in there. Uh, and in some cases, there's someone who is up and coming at another university. They don't have tenure yet at that university. We see them as being someone who could be a star and we make a bet. Sometimes we're right, sometimes we're not. Trustee Cottis asked me why that analysis only went back to 2022 and asked me to go back to 2021. So I have now done that. That year there were 12 people hired with tenure. 10 of them had had tenure prior to coming to the university. One of them was the Johns Hopkins situation that I've already discussed. And one of them was what's called a track change, which is someone who was a fixed term appointment. And we switched over, uh, that person to a tenure track appointment. Uh, you have a lot of detail in there about the post-tenure review system, uh, detailed explanation and statistics about that. Also a really elaborate analysis about faculty performance post-tenure. Really, I, I don't know that we've ever done this before. I've never seen that level of analysis before and shows what the faculty are accomplishing, uh, particularly, uh, post-tenure. And, and I think as a board who wish nothing but greatness for the university, the fact that our faculty are so incredibly productive across categories post-tenure is something I should, think should be a great point of pride, uh, for all of us. Uh, there's also the net present value analysis, uh, which as you've seen is, is quite positive for tenure track faculty. We're very proud of that as well. Uh, and that was a, a quite a bit of work and analysis. I wanted to publicly thank Elizabeth Pekanik, who's, uh, a financial analyst on my team who did that work. I think that's the first time we've ever had a net present value analysis associated with faculty performance. Uh, and then the final element of the report is the hiring strategy. And that's one area where we have created some new processes, uh, based on, uh, what you had asked about. Basically, uh, saying that the time when we hire people is the time to really be thinking about the economics and the future and the trends and so on. And so we started to do that now. And you have in the document areas where we would provide more scrutiny, uh, in order to make sure that the hire was sensible. So that was a pretty quick trip through about 15 pages, but I'm, I'm quite happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there questions?
Oh, and trustee Cottis, um, don't date, the, the question you asked me about the acronym is the date of state service, the first date of state service, whether it's at the university or someplace else, which is why it looks weird sometimes. I'm forgetting now if it's DTS or TTS or whatever it is.
I just want to start by saying, um, thank you to you and your team for working on this in a very open and transparent manner. Um, it's very refreshing for us to get this level of data um, and be presented this information when we're asked for it. Now, I know I asked you some questions last minute. Part of that is when we get the information, we're trying to digest everything. But I, I see this as a continuing conversation, not just one report. Um, one thing I would recommend is getting Vice Chancellor Knopfman's team to look at the NPV analysis. It really focuses just on revenues more than the actual net expenses out of that. So when you count gross grants or gross tuition as a line item that one faculty member brings in, that's not really true because there's expenses associated with that.
So we actually did do that. I can give you some more details about, that was one of my first conversations with Elizabeth, is that there's a lot of expenses that offset that revenue. So we can get you more detail about that, but we had the same insight you did, that they're not getting credit for all the revenue.
In the, I'm sorry, not in the report that we got, right?
No, in the report that you got, it's in the, it's in the fine print that we said there were some carve-outs for other administrative expenses that were set against the revenue in the NPV analysis.
Okay. So.
Clearly.
We generate a net cash flow positive of $400,000 per faculty member, tenure track faculty member.
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but that sounds about right. It was, I know it was 7 million over a period of the 23 years. So, yeah.
I would love for that to be the case, but I'm afraid I, I think when you count all the costs, that, that may not be. But just to double check, we could have, uh, Vice Chancellor Knopfman, who just flows up through, take a look at those analyses and, and see.
We want it to be as accurate as possible. So.
I hope that, that, that would be wonderful to hear that. I would put a big smile on my face if that's the case. One thing that's missing was looking at the counterfactual. So looking at the alternate to this. So this is kind of assuming tenure is the only option. It's not looking at an alternate option, which we do have, which is fixed term. And so it's kind of missing that component and that comparison to see. And then we're looking at aggregates, so that can hide variances. So when we look at the average, we may be getting someone that's bringing in a $20 million grant and then someone else that's not. And so this average kind of thing's on there. So again, this is a continuing conversation. I really appreciate where we are right now.
Sure.
And I see this as someplace we continue to track for.
Can I just say, respond to that and say that we actually did, uh, we have done the school level, school level analysis. Uh, we didn't put it in the report just because of length, but we can certainly get that to you.
Yeah, I think those are the main things. And then really just looking at this for where are the opportunities where we can improve. And I think that's a recurring theme that we have is just, we know, um, there's a tendency when someone wants to present this information, it's in the best light and it's presenting certain things. But where are the flaws? Where are the warts? What can we fix? Because, um, and I do that in my company. I'm looking for where do we have issues? Cause that's what I can fix. If it's just rosy all the time, I can't fix it. So maybe looking for where are the issues that could be addressed in a tenure 2.0?
Well, I, I don't know about tenure 2.0, but I will say that I think the board has had an influence uh, on the way that we're approaching hiring decisions. So we've done an analysis this year, uh, based on your recommendations that we've never done before and done a triage about hiring based on enrollment trends and whether they're tenure track or fixed term and so on. So I, I think that there's already been positive movement along the lines of what you're looking for.
Sure. And, and then lastly, I think that the Helios info would be very instructive as well, um, for kind of digging into this. But y'all have done a, a ton of work. Again, like I said at the beginning, this is more information we've received in my entire time on the board of trustees or even board of governors regarding tenure. And you've, you've, um, done that. And for all the criticism that we've received recently, this is all open session discussion of a very, uh, sensitive topic. And we're happy to discuss it in this format. We just, uh, it's, uh, great to have a provost and a chair that is willing to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Questions?
Sure. Thank you. Um, just a couple of, uh, comments and suggestions, um, you know, Jim. Uh, again, thank you for this. This is the most thorough sort of response to questions in one of these meetings that I've seen. So I really appreciate you and your team for doing that. Now I'll echo my support for tenure as a practice here at UNC Chapel Hill, because I do think it's core to our mission. I think you've demonstrated to us that the process that you go through over this seven-year evaluation is incredibly rigorous.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's anybody on, on this board who has the expertise to say if one individual is deserving of tenure in biology or economics or whatever it may be. So I think you've demonstrated a process whereby we can trust you and your team to do that. You know, I, I do think there's a, there's a couple of areas, you know, one, we talked about kind of the budget and how, you know, the process you're going through to decide when, how many tenure track faculty we're going to hire, because that's really the point of make, where we make the decision. I might just suggest that on an ongoing basis, there be a report to the board. It could be, you know, congruent with our budget cycle or whatever, just to share with us how we're thinking about that and where we're dialing up versus dialing down in terms of our investment in tenure. Cause I think that's important as we think about, how do we, how do we grow our tenured capacity in the areas that are going to be most important for our students and, and for the state going forward? And then second would be, you know, we, we get, you know, every, every time we come together, we get a list of the folks that are, you know, are, are up for promotion and everything, which is great. Not, not the names, but I think, you know, on a periodic basis, whether it's once, once a year, whatever, maybe share with us the outcome of post-tenure review. You know, not the individual names, but here's, here's the rigor we've applied. Here's, you know, we've got, you know, this many folks that are on as, as you've highlighted in some of your backcasted data here, but you know, here's how we're managing this on an ongoing basis. So we can, we can see that that rigor is being applied on an ongoing process. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Trustee Meekins? Trustee Brian?
Uh, yeah, I'll reiterate the thanks for the helpful material. And maybe it's your, your business school back, background to really directly answering, uh, the questions put, put to you and, and trying to frame them back up in the ways I think people requested them. I think it's a great, I, I, I think for some of us, we're always trying to understand, you know, what exactly is tenure? What does it protect or not protect? Um, what are the budget impacts of it? Um, what are the course offering impacts? So student experience impacts based on, okay, if you hire somebody in this field and tenure, and then we're teaching this and we need more people over in some other space. So I mean, I would just say I look forward to it. I, I think you've been really helpful. I think, um, everybody, everybody wants faculty, wants great faculty to do, you know, to make sure we have this, right? But I think, uh, but exactly, what does it mean, you know, and, and how do we budget out appropriately is, is something we can.
Sure. No, thanks for that. In the, uh, the presentation I made the last time, I did have laid out the departments where most of the tenured faculty are. And it's, you know, business and law and pediatrics. And it's not anything that's in any danger of, of going away. So I think there's some really good news there. And I know you, you probably want to move on to the next thing, but I just want to say again, I, I hope that based on the previous presentation and this one, you, you do appreciate the incredible quality of the colleagues that we have at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. These are world-class teachers, scholars, people that are really helping to change the world. And, um, I, I will give you an open invitation to any of you, if you would ever like to come to campus and meet any of them and go to the classrooms and the labs. I'm quite happy to, to give you that direct experience because I guarantee you, you'll feel better about life once you do that. Thank you.
Other questions? Trustee Blaine?
Thank you, uh, for getting this information together, Jim, and such a support for your time. I know that I had asked the predecessor for this information and been promised this information repeatedly. And, uh, it was a, never delivered and it was a source of my, um, lack of understanding of the process. And I really appreciate you taking the time to sit down with me individually and go through this. And, but especially to explain, and while I think I still disagree with tenure and principal was crazy policy in the modern age. Uh, your explanation and on behalf of the faculty about the challenges of the seventh year review, after going through the amount of work that the faculty has gone through to get to that point and have us make a decision at that point that seems arbitrary to them and seems sudden to us. And your explanation and walking me through that process really helped me understand kind of the faculty's point of view on that. And I just really appreciate you doing what you said you were going to do and taking the time, you know, to coach, coach me up. And again, I, I want to echo some of trustee Allison's thoughts. It seems to me that I hope you're, maybe we can continue this discussion about, you know, what the ought to be at the various points. And then some of the information you and I talked about when we met, that you could maybe deliver to us when we get these tenure recommendations that would, uh, better, um, show and demonstrate the amount of work that the faculty have put in at the university during the seven years they've worked towards that tenure process. But again, I think this is huge forward progress and I thank you so much for it.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Provost Dean, for using your interim period so productively. It's much appreciated and admirable.
Thank you.
Is there a room drafted permanently?
I mean.
Or no, we can't comment on personnel in, in session.
Our final information item is to hear a campus security update from UNC Chief of Police, Brian James. Chief James, welcome.
Hey, thank you. And thank you to the committee for allowing me to present this afternoon. Uh, I'll try to be brief, looking at time. Uh, we, um, uh, talked, uh, at least a year ago about some of our updates. And certainly we had a tragedy on campus, uh, a couple of years ago, which drove a lot of our work. So I'd like to give updates on that and also like to give a path forward on how to continue to keep campuses as safe as possible. One of the topics that comes up frequently is cameras on campus. So as a result of that, we formed a camera committee, uh, that has been active, uh, for the last over a year now, uh, to include representatives from IT, emergency management facilities and police. Uh, we have added a number of cam, cameras on campus to include replacement of older cameras. And we've also added a mobile element, uh, in the way of a, a camera trailer that helps us with, uh, special events uh, in places where we don't currently have coverage. We've also, uh, from the police standpoint, we fully implemented our, uh, take-home car program, uh, as a result of support from this board, as well as the chancellor's office. Uh, that has assisted us in faster deployment where officers come to work, uh, fully prepared to go on patrol, which has added to additional hours of patrol on campus. Uh, we've also contracted, uh, with a third-party vendor that has enabled us to increase our numbers of officers, uh, through mutual aid agreements for our very large events, such as our recent events with the pre-game, uh, pre-football game activities, as well as the game itself. And that has been a great help to us. Uh, we have talked about license plate readers, uh, which we fully implemented in May of last year. Uh, that has been a great resource for us. Uh, that has led to the solving of various crimes on campus and also included, uh, the development of suspects in two armed robberies that occurred just off campus in November of last year. So that has been a great resource for us. We have also invested in drones, uh, which we have used for high-profile events to include athletic events on campus, uh, to monitor large crowds and also look at elevated, uh, locations on campus where we could receive threats. Uh, we are also testing a drone detection software, uh, which we have used, uh, for about the last three weeks now. Uh, that has proven to be very effective. That was facilitated by Fred Sellers, uh, with the UNC System Office. So we're hoping, uh, to be able to keep that particular piece of technology as it's been useful. The, uh, behavioral, Carolina Behavioral Assessment and Management Team, uh, is fully implemented now under the direction of Angel Gray. We work very closely with them. Uh, they serve as a, a mechanism or a bridge for students, faculty and staff We work very closely with them. They serve as a mechanism or a bridge for students, faculty and staff to report any concerning behavior. And then they refer those cases to us as needed, based on the information that they obtain. We also continue to work very closely with local, state and federal partners as far as sharing information and also helping us to analyze certain information that we come upon that affects our campus. We also work with the, and continue to work with the North Carolina SBI Information Sharing and Analysis Center. Internally, we have continued annual training on rapid deployment with our officers, also known as active shooter training. And we've also continued to deliver active shooting, shooter training in person on campus based on requests. Emergency management under the direction of Mr. Darryl Jeter. He has formalized a crisis management team, which we pull together anytime we have a significant event on campus that has key partners with that. Under his direction, we also were able to complete a tabletop exercise earlier this year, which included partners throughout campus as well as local, state and, and some federal partners were involved in that as well. We have a, a very, and this has come up certainly with the tragedy that happened in Utah. We have a very robust system in place to secure events, which includes many of those campus partners I mentioned to include threat assessment, as well as emergency management, local, state and federal partners. Looking at intel on particular individuals that may come to campus, considered to be high profile speakers, and also any active threats to our campus based on those speakers or based on the event itself. That is an ongoing project that we participate in. Some of our challenges that we've had, and we've mentioned this before, we have multiple camera platforms on campus, which sometimes makes it hard to pull the data in the one space where we can essentially look at it if we're monitoring an event. That is something that we have talked about before. The next step we feel would be to look at the procurement of a software platform that could consolidate all of these camera systems, as well as bring in other technologies that we're already using, such as the license plate readers, as well as the drones that we're using. And, and hopefully, moving forward with that, that would be our first step in the formation of a real time information center here for campus. What we would envision is that we would staff that real time information center during peak hours on campus, which are typically about seven AM till about nine PM, Monday through Friday. And of course, we would activate that center when we have any kind of large event on campus, such as an athletic event or graduation. We could also consolidate all other technologies on campus. Like I said, cameras, drones, LPRs, things like that. What we're doing here, and when we talk about looking at a component to consolidate all this technology, we're not necessarily adding more technology. We're already using a lot of technology. The challenge that we have is that when we're trying to essentially pull that technology into one space where it can be consistently monitored, we don't have that. Oftentimes, we're being dispatched to calls on campus. What municipalities have done is they've used this technology, what they may call a real time crime center. And I'm sure you've heard that term. And they are essentially giving officers a preview or heads up going to a call, which is often helpful to let us know how many officers we need to respond, how we need to prepare for that. And, and what I'm hoping is that as we implement this technology, not only does it make us safer as far as being able to detect crime, but also in the prevention of crime. We've never been, we've always been transparent about the technologies that we're using. And what we hope is that this serves as a deterrent for anyone that would want to come on campus and, and commit a crime or do harm. Again, I want to thank you for your support for public safety on campus. I believe that as we continue to improve public safety and add technology, it's an ongoing process. I, I think that the moment we stop trying to think of, or stop thinking about how to be safer on campus would become less safe. And, and that's just my personal belief. But at this time, I would enjoy any questions that you might have as to where we are right now.
Trustee Curtis?
We even need to look, do you? Chief James, thanks for the presentation. You know, I think we've been following the news recently with the assassination of Charlie Kirk and the young woman that perished on the light rail train down in Charlotte. And Chief Baker has been a critic for a while of the light rail policies down there that allowed a lot of these folks to be dumped out on the UNC Charlotte campus at the end of the night when the train would finish. But you have done a lot to harden this target. We, you know, we're considered generally a soft target because we're open to the public and we're a gun free zone, which invites bad actors to come in and want to do things. And we're doing a lot of events like this upcoming, you know, the expansion we've done with the football program, having more people on campus, and that just makes your job more difficult. And the reason that we're wearing all these, you know, fund UNC police buttons is that we need to make sure that the proper resources are allocated before something happens, not after. And that's when a lot of schools will then go back in and do things afterwards. But for those that don't know, Chief James developed a live response center in Greensboro and developed that out. I've been over and seen that and it's impressive operation. Basically, a crime is committed and he's got people there that can pull from all the disparate camera systems through FUSIS or FLOCK or other programs that will pull back in, because these camera systems don't talk to each other. So you can pull at it, you have tracking in one place, get someone that's trained to do this that identifies a perpetrator or potential perpetrator and tracks them down and help solve the crime or prevent crime as well. In Charlotte, they are doing something similar. They've got a live response center going in there at UNC Charlotte. So I think it's entirely appropriate, given that we're the flagship, to have our own live response center, to have the proper technology. It also would allow officers, when they're going into a building, to then see those cameras live while they're going in to address a threat. So it improves officer safety. So, you know, I would like to request, and it doesn't have to be in the form of a motion here, if there's a consensus among the board and the chancellor, that we pursue our own live response center, that we enhance our camera operations, we enhance licensed tag readers as well. And I would add to that another item that I know you've discussed before is an autonomous drone that could be deployed in situations like this to immediately get eyes on in the air when you've got issues. One other thing that I, I've mentioned before and sent something in, not in a meeting, but outside of it, is the Narcan dispensers on the various floors. It's a, I want to say a seventy grand spend and would prevent an overdose if someone had that in each one of the residential dorms on each floor. There's a minimal cost. It's got a shelf life. But if there's a consensus among the board and the chancellor is interested in moving forward with this, I think that the next step would be for us to find funds for this and make these things happen. And I, I fully support it. I don't want to be sitting here thinking about something that happened that we could have prevented. And I think these are reasonable cost items. We just talked about our six point two billion dollar endowment and different funds being spent for anything, not to pick on development, but forty four million for development. I think we could allocate a few hundred thousand or so for the safety of our students. And it would prevent anything from a high profile assassination type attempt or scooter theft or someone being attacked on campus.
Thank you, trustee Curtis. And thank you for your diligent work on this always. Other questions? Trustee Valentine?
Thank you. Safety was my number one issue. And I appreciate all you're doing. You talked about deterrence and prevention, which I think are important.
Yes, sir.
To what extent do you work with our comms department? And I don't know how many would be criminals are watching this BOT meeting today. But how, how, how do we get the word out that this is a safe place? And we're not going to tolerate crime? And we have cameras everywhere. How, how do we, how do we get that word out?
Yep. So we work with university communications on a frequent basis, typically to put out directed messages. We have put out safety messages. If you're talking about specifically a message to, you know, would be criminals to come to campus, that's certainly something we could work on. But again, I, I never want to be secretive about what we do. I want people to know that it's a good chance that if you come on UNC's campus and commit a crime, that you, you will be apprehended and that we have the, the, the technology in place to do that.
Yeah, I haven't studied it. I don't know what, what impact it has to have a sign in front of your home or business that says, you know, smile, you're on camera, camera or whatever, right? I mean, I imagine that that works a little bit. So it would be nice if, if we would advertise and, you know, inculcate into, into the whole community that this is a safe place. You don't want to commit a crime here. If you do, we're going to find it out and you're going to be punished. And if, if all that is working, I think that'll be a good way to prevent crime.
I appreciate that. We can certainly work with the university communication.
I fully agree with what Marty Cottis has said and also Patrick Valentine. We need to find the money. That should not stop us from improving security challenges. And also prevention is worth a ton of fuel. So in my opinion, what you need for during the security of our students, our faculty and the people that visit here, you should ask this board, and I hope there won't be any resistance in giving the money for security purposes for our college here, for UNC. That is my statement.
Thank you, trustee Klaup. Any other questions or comments for Chief James?
One quick comment.
Sure.
In the category of find the money, the initiatives and needs that you talked about today, we don't have to go get into this today, but want to get really clear sooner before later on what's funded of the things that you talked about and what's not funded. Vice Chancellor Klaupman, I know we have a, you know, you took us through the schedule for budgeting, et cetera, but would love to get very clear on of the things that you mentioned, what's already funded, what's not funded, what's on the wish list, if you will, so we can have some clarity on that would be helpful.
Yeah, certainly. So trustee Cottis mentioned one particular brand of, of product that would merge these systems. There are several out there, so competition is good. There may be another product just as good, but, but, but more budget friendly. Certainly the system itself, that will be a recurring cost. The most expensive cost will be staff. So if we looked at staffing it during those peak hours and to include significant events on campus, we're probably looking at a staff of about four to five people. And with salary and benefits, you, I'm just, Vice Chancellor Klaupman would be better at this than me, but probably ninety to a hundred thousand dollars a year with salary and benefits for each person. So all being recurring costs.
So these cameras, do you have cameras that you can see an incident about to occur? And can you speak to that camera where the people can hear the camera?
No, we, we do not have that technology. And, and again.
That might prevent a lot of, you know, skirmishes or whatever from before happening. Because there is some, as trustee Cottis said, that if we have a central monitoring station and you see somebody doing something that they shouldn't do, you can, from the central monitoring station, say stop. And that might stop them from doing this, whatever. I just thought that I would ask you that question.
And, and I would say that, that we are continually looking at new technology as it continues to develop. That may be something possible. I, I think from our perspective now, we're, we are still looking at spots on campus where we don't have cameras, where we have blind spots, and then also looking at some of the dated cameras that need to be replaced that sometimes fail us when we need them. But, but certainly, thank you for that comment. And we are constantly looking at technology that will improve safety on campus.
Thank you. Yeah, trustee Valentine, to, to follow up on that, LVT trailers that we use on our properties, we've got three of them deployed, do have that feature. And they have a auto voice that will come on if someone comes around an area. Let's say two o'clock in the morning, they're not supposed to be there, it will let them know that they're being watched. So there's developing technologies and part of this would be getting chief out to some different conferences to see what's available and how we can improve our security.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to show support for trustee Cottis Narcan initiative. I think that it's, it's really important. You know, you see a lot of student groups that take it on themselves, distribute Narcan around campus and how important it is for someone to have access to this resource. But also the amount of students that have no knowledge about how to administer Narcan in case of an emergency. And I think that can link back to a communications plan. Because again, a lot of situations are things that are waiting for a clock to tick till something happens. So thank you for mentioning that. I think it would be great for the administration to take more initiative to make sure it's available to students.
And just for information, our officers, we do carry Narcan. But oftentimes when an emergency like that happens, we're not going to be the first ones there. So I certainly agree with and, and support that idea.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the board, we appreciate you. We appreciate the fine team that you staff on our behalf for these meetings and for all of the important campus events, for your sister police organizations when they support us, the Highway Patrol and always the Orange County Sheriff's Department and our friend Charles Blackwood, who has served this university with such devotion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, could we hear from Chancellor Roberts on this topic as well, if he's got any thoughts?
On the overall topic of campus safety or the Narcan issue in particular? The funding for both. So we, we absolutely agree it's a priority. Obviously, we operate and whenever people say find the money, I, I, I think about the fact that we operate in a highly structured funding environment. But I, I'm sure there are some things that we can do. I think the Narcan suggestion in particular is, is a good one. We've been committed to increasing and augmenting campus safety throughout my time here. As you heard from Chief James, I think this board has played a really, really constructive role in encouraging us to stay focused on campus safety and it remains a priority for the administration.
Thank you. So we will address the closed session items tomorrow with the full board, as well as trustee Blaine's resolution. And we stand adjourned. I cannot be.